Good morning, everybody. Would you like to call this meeting to order on the 3/7/2019 meeting of the Sinaloa special meeting? And would you please call your... Commissioner Fambro.
Present.
Commissioner Middel.
Present.
Commissioner Benkner.
Present.
Vice Chair Dogg.
Present.
If you would all please stand, we have an inspirational devotion today from Sina Holton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And in the words of the greatest psalmist that ever wrote, Shepherd Lloyd, Sina Donza, poetry became king and ruled the country. In one of his verses, "Great is the Lord and greatly to be praised." I'm sure you all agree, coming here, spring, the trees, the colors, you deserve praise and we give you praise. And it is you, Lord God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the God and Father of Yeshua Hamashiach, Jesus, who we pray. And your words, your presence with us now continue to exhort us. And it is by your word that we are here to pray for those in authority. You said that thousands of years ago, you desire order in a community. And you send up governors. And your word is very strong when it says, "I exhort you," that first of all, you pray for all those in authority, kings, presidents, governors, mayors. And today, our commissioners, and Father, I mention on my name, your hand of blessing, blessing for wisdom to rule this community. Your hand of Jim Fambro, Marka Jegas, Gabriel Romero, Candice O'Donnell, Tom Bladenhorn, your county attorney, Leandro Cordova, and Brent Harameo. May they feel your spirit opening their minds to rule for the good of this community. According to your word, which loves this community and wants order and peace and prosperity through those who govern. Thus, Father, we humbly pray in all these things, and yet with strong reconciliation, ask your blessing on the community of Taus County. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for having me. Chairman had a family emergency, and I'm sorry he's not here today. Ms. Bladen, would you please lead us into pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, our next item is approval of the agenda. There are several items that we need to deliver and one we need to add. We are debating under presentations. Item A, and item C. And relating to item K, we are adding pre-conference. And we, under item M, we are striking Samantha Rivera's name. And under presentations, we are adding item E, which will be a proclamation declaring corrections officers' day. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
No, there's an additional amendment, Chairman, and that would be concluding item 17A, a request of Chairman Daniels. That's his item that he placed, and he's not here, so he has to...
Yes, all right. Those changes...
To it, we'll table it to a non-specific time.
All right. Thank you.
Does it have a motion, Chairman? I'll go in second.
Second, yeah. First and second, thank you. Please call them. Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Benkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Middel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dogg.
Yes.
Next item is new hires through the month of April. We have Urban Chavez, Facilities Maintenance Tech, Yvonne Romero, Senior Program Head Cook, Paul Peterson, Facilities Maintenance Tech Two-Temp, Samantha Rivera, Healthcare Assistance Program Outreach Specialist, and Gilda Gentat, Healthcare Assistance Program Administration Assistant.
Chairman, we do have Samantha and Gilda in the audience. Will they please stand up? Samantha is on our left and Gilda on our right. Welcome to the Taus Academy.
Thank you.
Next, we have citizens concerned, citizens wishing to speak, shall limit their comments to five minutes and no adjournments taken. Do we have anyone who would like to speak under citizens' form? All right, they're being done. We'll move on to Chris. Ms.... Could you please speak up?
I was slowly, I'm sorry. I was speaking to him. I'm glad Mr. Stedman is here. I saw him as he came in, and told him that on Saturday evening at some point, there will be a poetry meeting. He's tired of Mindwell Poetry and Mental Health Recovery Facilities. It's from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. and it is poetry by people who are or who have been in recovery. He said, "Mindwell Poetry and even poetry share their own journeys in recovery facilities." And speaking about addressing solutions, finding solutions, dealing with concerns and problems, seems to be important that the people who are the most vulnerable, who are involved, be heard and are decisions. And it seems to me that there's been a lot of talk in this room by this body about a opioid addiction going back a number of years. It's been five or six years since I first spoke about it. Along the way, and I'm not picking on Mr. Bladenhorn, Mr. Bladenhorn spoke about the fact that there was legislation to address the problem. He said at that time, yes, but the funding. And even now, we're dealing with problems in funding, which the problem isn't being addressed. Mr. Bladenhorn, as someone who works with and helps the homeless, it seems to me that this is something that people would want to attend. I know that poetry is anybody's favorite thing to do, but poetry is for everybody. Everybody should enjoy poetry. So I would encourage, not just encourage you, I would say it's important that you try to be there if you already have commitment to listen to these people, to listen to what they have to say, and maybe to talk to them. And with respect also to the homeless, Mr. Bladenhorn, maybe, maybe there are some of the fellows there that might like to go. It's a question of abuse, injustices, who knows? The people dealing with difficulties. And they might, they might find inspiration in that, so I hope they can show up as well. And Chris, I'll send a message to Bill and let him know and encourage the board to go as well, the other board.
I've spoken not long ago about my concern with the city plus contract. My concern initially was that it was this corporation out there with potential for gathering information in this community. After looking at the contract more closely and thinking about it, it seems to me that maybe the, that you folks are what it would seem to be ministered. I don't know, it's not clear if the term "systems administrator" shows up in the contract and it also shows up on that page in which, on which someone can sign up to participate in some manner in the conversation. But there's no attribution on that page as to is this city plus, or is this the County of Taus? You leave the city plus, the County of Taus plus, and you go to this blank page with no attribution. Words like "system administrator," "system administrator," who is, is a system administrator here, who actually was heard and talking about her, and talking about that word "systems administrator," or is it a system administrator associated with city plus? This is about language as much as anything else. Share meaning analysis, Mr. Bladenhorn. The only person here who understands shared meaning analysis, had our board, I just talked about, would be Mr. Bladenhorn. If that's what language is about, to share a common understanding of the words. And unless we don't have a common understanding of the person, I don't see how we can understand the contract. I'll look at it more closely and make it with my questions in writing, but I think it's important for us, yes.
Thank you. Could you please give us the date again, the time of the...
I used to go to the website, and I'm sure I read Saturday evening, this Saturday evening from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at some point, some city plaza drive.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, Mr. Philkey?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. I'd like to call, call the commission's attention to any health, safety, and welfare considerations on many future 5G proposals for licensing from the county. And that's about all I have, but I haven't heard anything good about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philkey. We will now move on to presentations. Item A is unveiling of a mural art project for the Gorge Bridge Rest Area, Rio Grande Memorial National Monument. We have Karen Bolton, the coordinator at Taus Academy, and Tracy Police, Director of Taus Academy, and Laura Newbert, art teacher. Thank you for being here.
Hi there. My name is Laura Newbert, as listed, and I helped this last fall and winter teach a mural painting class at Taus Academy. These murals in question are going to be installed soon at the Rio Grande Memorial Rest Area. So I'm just going to say a little bit about my process, that, you know, teaching the students, you know, naming who they were. So the students, we did have a whole bunch in this class, but they were very, very dedicated. They did an amazing job. And I just want to point out, while I didn't instruct the class, they did the majority of the work. You know, I was only there to kind of help direct them when they had questions and to kind of facilitate, you know, access to supplies and access to any kind of information that they needed as far as our techniques go. So my students were Annabeth Polpato, Noel Dupree, and Lila Blakely. And when we entered to the class, all of the students had varying levels of understanding about art. Lila was actually fairly well-educated in the subject and had taken classes outside of it. Noel and Annabeth had not had as much education in the subject, but what I found was, for the first half of the class, I helped just instruct them in, you know, things like anatomy, color theory, and perspective. And each of them brought something very unique and interesting to the class that they sort of discovered through the first initial weeks of learning very basic things. And, you know, I just wanted them to sort of like refine their ideas. We decided ultimately to print the murals from the paintings that they made. This helps so that if there is graffiti, which is an unfortunate possibility, it can be easily wiped off the surface. It would be much more difficult to damage them if somebody wanted to, you know, puncture or hit the surface of the mural. And so while they did most of the painting, I did help them with printing. And, you know, we worked in acrylic because this helped with both like speed of painting, it allowed for brighter color, and it also ensured that they weren't exposed to anything unhealthy or toxic. I'm not sure how much everybody knows about painting, but unfortunately, some materials like oil could be really unhealthy to work with. And, you know, creating a mural helps for students to engage with their community better. This, you know, the, all three students who helped work on this grew up in this community. We went through a lot of studies deciding, you know, what do you most associate with your town? What do you most associate with this, with this area? Not just animals, not just like vegetation, but also what colors do you think, think of when you think of Taus? You know, what is the shade of blue that you think of? What, what do these colors look like in your memory? And I, I think the really nice thing about it is that, you know, now that this will be installed, it allows the community to also feel a sense of pride in the talents and skills of its own children. So, you know, here's this beautiful piece of art, they made this for you. So I would like to thank, you know, of course, the students who put in so much time and energy. I'd like to thank Karen, who helped me put together the class, Karen Bolton, I should bet her listening, and helped me to create the curriculum. I'd like to thank Candace O'Donnell, who helped try to serve as a liaison between the county and between the school. And I would like to also thank Brent Harameo, who is the county manager, and it was his idea to reach out to Taus Academy to put this class into motion, and now we will put those up very soon at the gorge and something nice looking to look at when you go to Delmore. It's such a beautiful way to speak, of course.
And I just wanted to let you guys know that Laura Newbert's class, thank you Laura Newbert for, you know, spearheading the project as well. It's part of our STEM Arts Institute at Taus Academy, where we have professionals from the community come into our school to teach our, our children about their profession. So that's, you know, artists, it's architects, scientists, you know, video production, all of the, you know, theater. So it's a wonderful way to involve the community in the school. And I just want to say thank you commissioners for involving our students in a community project. We want to continue to do that as much as possible. We are a community school, and it really helps our students appreciate where they live and want to take care of our community like we all do. So thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Real quick, I just want to say that today, this week, is educators' awareness week in appreciation, and I just want to appreciate Laura and Karen for awesome program, for awesome project, and commissioners, thanks for letting us present to you today in public. If you see a teacher today, celebrate teachers today. We have all the teachers in the county, and here's two of them.
Thank you. I'm sure if we could please go up here, photo, which brought Vera, Taus Academy. Sheriff, if you would join us, please, for this photo opportunity.
Chairman, so are these for sale, lady, for sale?
For sale? No, they're for the, they're going to be installed at the River and Gorge Museum Center with the intention...
Oh, these are...
These are the images. They're actually printed on metal, so that like Laura was saying, they won't change the, the theme, the theme. Although we gave them a sheet that we should maybe make some prints of.
Yes, yes, thank you.
But I know, we do that. We'll be prints for sale soon. I don't know. Can you give me a line or a... Do we block it out? We're not...
Item A is approval of the April 16th, 2019 regular minute. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some... Second.
Second motion, second. Clerk, please call them. Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Benkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Middel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dogg. Item B is approval of the April 26th, 2019 special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve, Chairman?
Second.
It has been motion to approve, but seconded. Clerk, please call them. Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Benkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Middel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dogg. Yes. Now we're moving on to item B, under presentations, and that is discussion regarding operations building the facility you built.
That all sounds good to me, guys.
We are facility builder. I want to introduce my colleagues, my name is Neil Coca, Vice President, and then Minier Long, our Chief Estimator, who worked quite successfully on that project. And Mark and Cam are one of our designers, and then Cam is Coca's brother and Vice President as well. Want to introduce, you know, a lot of you have heard about this project. Also want to thank Brent Harameo, Mr. Sanchez, for kind of leading this project with us. It's been a long, over a year-long process that we worked on this project, coming out of a need from the county to kind of consolidate some operations, modernize some of the facilities, the buildings, have something that's a little more tailored than we need to some of the vehicles and operations. You know, that, you know, Taus County services about 15,000 households, you know, 2,400 square miles of air space, that's from, you know, small fire stations to large administration complexes. And we know that, you know, the operations are the backbone of, of these services. And so we think pretty, you know, not pretty things that the public doesn't always see. So with this, you know, our process, we started design, we had multiple redesigns, it was a hugely collaborative process. Really want to again thank Brent Harameo for bringing the right people to the table, having end users, some of our colleagues, and many things, you know, have about 30 members in those meetings. So that was really key, we proactive in the design, and designed to exactly what needs to be done to meet, you know, what the operations of this space. So with that, I'm just going to pass on to, you know, how our presentation is going to go. Cam is going to go over a little bit of our timeline, where we've been so far, where we are with the project. Mark's going to go over the design, why we programmed certain things based on end users' feedback. And then Minier's going to go over our pricing. You know, we've gone out multiple times, got multiple bids, and before you is a binder that has a lot of backup and numbers, line and breakdowns, you know, quotes from subcontractors, even the ones we didn't use to show you. That, you know, we chose the most competitive end user for this project. So we love, if you guys have clarification questions about the project, you know, as a presentation, please ask, but we'd love to answer your question at the end, too. So with that, let Cam take it.
Cameron, obviously, brother, sister. This is the time of the year when you guys have your buyers on the second page, I believe. Now, this is a tool...
The company is a little kind.
Yeah, right on the table, talking forward to the conference. This is a tool that we use during the entirety of the process. Actually, this was created for Taus County, it's the first time my note was created on a senior center, obviously. And it's worked so well that we've adopted it throughout our entire program. And as you can see, it has six different steps. You know, this whole thing started off with site visits almost a year ago, over a year ago, then when we designed, we were designing for quite a while, but there's a lot of meetings Cam spoke about that. I think we had six to eight meetings in total, 30 members each. It was very, very collaborative, as you mentioned. And you can see on the timeline, we checked off every step that we've gone through so far to do what we are doing. This is a really exciting moment for us to be here presenting in front of you. We got down to the pricing, obviously, and that's where we are, the last check is where this happens. Now, you know, you can see pending approvals and whatever you have to do after the meeting. Move forward into pre-construction and then construction and then closeout. And that's kind of the timeline of this whole thing. Now, Mark is going to go over quickly the design, I know we don't have a ton of time, and show you why we built it the way we built it.
So I believe everybody's learned where the site is near the airport. And this is, originally they had five acres, and they added three to five additional acres, so that's how we locate the building more central to that, so we have circulation all around the site. The building is oriented, so the east is the public entrance, and we did that because we didn't want any kind of ice buildup that could easily burn off in the winter time. That was an important consideration. Also, sloping the roofs east and west, so we didn't have any drainage on the north side, which is important to Taus, of course. And then also just keeping it away from the bays where all the trucks are. So we're shedding away from all the doors. This is, this is phase one, which is the offices and the fleet maintenance, so it's kind of a 50/50. The building is a pre-manufactured metal building, but it's very well insulated, which was a concern. It's an R25, and the walls over here adjust the fleet maintenance, and we've got almost a R44 in the opposite area, R38 in the roofs. So very well insulated. So very well insulated, helps reduce, uh, heat and cooling. Uh, we have LED lights throughout, we have low toilet toilets, we have a tree keep fountain with water bottle fillers. Um, we have, basically we have solar panels laid out on phase two. We were asked to just wait on design, but have it as a consideration and to step out for the future. We've mentioned, hey, we could do it on the phase one. It's hard if you want to do it, is how we proceed with that. So it's, um, it's a consideration we've taken in. This, this east half is, uh, gonna be asphalt paving. This is all base course, kind of reduce, uh, cost at this point. This could be paved at later time because of the base course. It's fenced completely around, so it's protected. It has, uh, access points here for the public and for the trucks. We do have access over on Talis left over. Uh, that'll just be like a lock gate, just be for the trucks. Um, so basically I'm showing phase one and two together because we wanted to make sure that we considered everything when we eventually do phase two. So that's why we're showing this physical model right now. That's all.
Can just to mention, you know, originally, the entire project kind of came to a one, as we did, see the limited cost analysis. That's when we decided to de-scope and take it to a phased project and just get with phase one. So phase one really came out of live discussions again, end users, to say what is the bare minimum that we need right now to be operational? Um, and to meet our goals at the moment. And then, you know, really wanting to show phase two as, you know, down the line. And that, that does include everything. But, um, it came out of, you know, some, some cost analysis that showed a higher price side. And that's why we de-scoped it.
Uh, yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. So whether we believe that as far as cost analysis at this point.
Perfect. All that, Ramir, go over that.
Okay, regarding cost analysis, this is part three of the cost analysis. We start off with initial 25% school. In this project, which is 75% which catch all the building costs. And now we've had the site development, uh, with the main engineering. And we've developed the, uh, overall gross, uh, actual price. To, to get there, um, once the solar report was done, this was completed. We've taken into account the project cost, the four tax is four million 926,000, 489, 16. And that's based on culmination where we're at. We did add a lot of this based on, uh, request for the asphalt. So the front asphalt area being added of 133, 541, 168. And then, um, because we're looking at phase two, it would be recommended that we let it do the ORX and fence that off so that it's prepared for the future. Cause it did, at this time, this is a mix of costs of 27,000, 673, where it would be quite a bit more, uh, when you have kind of combined space now. This project is broken down on page two, where we have everything by line item. Okay, on page two, on page two, under subcontractors, you can see who listens, everybody that's involved in the project. All of these subcontract quotes are in the next tab area where it has everybody broken down. So you can see exactly what's involved for the transparency. Um, we ended up with, um, a testing group. We had, um, real for the earthwork and asphalt. And then the rest of our ones that did are were part of the design team on the front end. Uh, we coordinated the design team with the, uh, MEPs so that we can keep the cost down and get what the county was looking for. And we did this for group meetings. The cost per square foot on the building of 20,196 square feet for the building area is 186, 64, which is very competitive in the industry. The site that we developed is an 8 acre site, about 340,000 square feet. That works out to 380 square foot. Uh, based on the solar report, we had import of almost the entire site of 18 inches of material. So, um, that's part of this, thrown the cost, we were shooting for about four and a half, we ended at about five. Um, the rest of it is broken down again by category, by proposal here. The only other thing that, two things on the side we didn't mention earlier. The vinyl glass and all the catch basins to help keep contaminants out of the soil. And then, um, we have a future of water retention show so that we can recycle the water off the eastern slope of the building. And the entire site is for a rain system built in, very easy to control. What's actually on the plan down below here is going to retention pond. And that's where everything's gonna be out. And next to the tension pond is going to be the semi field. Is there any questions at this point? We can get into the details, but I don't think it's necessary at this point because it's all broken down for you. If anybody has any questions, I'm available, iPhone or whoever. And feel free, anybody can give me a call. And that's all I've got at this point. So it looks like we're putting, uh, both the tunneling and solid waste in to phase one building. And then make sure that's plus spread out in the phase two.
No, Commissioner, this is, um, the pricing for phase one, which is just that metal section.
Your section here.
And.
Look at the floor plan though, it looked like everyone had an office in there.
Everybody has offices. So eventually it is to consolidate those three departments into one facility.
So as they're being had, is her operating out of one facility right now? Cause a wire might have hurt there.
So phase one includes office space that's gonna be used for the phase two, which, yeah, to keep everyone in the same office space.
And phase two, what will that replace? Those, those other two buildings are for solid waste and public works.
Right, so, um, the one facing north, uh, is where public works. And then the opposite side is the one for solid waste.
Where are those guys?
They're all with our place. So we're, we're all listing at the seams of the whole doorway.
So phase, by the end of phase two, they're gonna be done?
The army will be done down in the kit. Even if you said these components are all for purposes or public safety purposes.
So in the meantime, in between phase one and phase two, will we keep the army, it's only for what we're using?
Yes.
Thanks.
And Commissioners, just a little, we're gonna keep meetings with you. And this day talks off and you can see kind of the floor plan of how everything works. You guys can play around with pitfall at work. So you can keep your buyers if you don't, like I said, we recycle everything, but if you don't, we'll have to keep. Absolutely.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Any other question?
Kind of for solid waste, do they have enough space to put their vehicles or basically want to promote a recycling facility? Or like do you have a current cardboard paper, does it have room for that?
So they, they each have three bays parking for their trucks.
Close to the middle of the side.
So each have three bays here.
Sounds like maybe we can talk about is there a machine or a, okay. Um, I don't think that Ramir especially, please flat that into this. Um, but again, since we are phasing it, I think that's something, um, you know, this, our timeline for this, we're not gonna be offering any phase one until fall of 2020. So I think there is plenty of time on phase two to potentially adapt that. And there may be further development on that program if that is needed. Um, and I think we'll expand upon that.
And there's gonna be two other acres on the site that is available that you should develop.
Any other questions?
Something, Madam Chair, um, with regards to recycling, it would be cool if there was space in the front. That would be accessible to the public for recycling purposes.
I mean, you're already developing this in there.
Yeah, I did all the, yeah, I still have masters on this side here.
Yeah.
So we can put containers where you choose to hear, and then they can break it out to the rest of the site. This is a very large site.
I, I recognize that, you know, sometimes maybe the public, they found that bar to go to the landfill. And but sometimes the public, it's so long, you go all the way into the landfill.
And it's not a dominant, have just cycles for glass and cargo traffic to be placed in this location. And there's, there's that room for whatever you want to do. We considered for this was making sure that we had, uh, control of the traffic flow, that we had separation from the employees and the public. So all that is attached on the side.
So in terms of, uh, the catching, uh, system for water, uh, to be able to.
There's three catch bases, the vinyl glass in it. Those, those are the catch for the site of the building. They have internal trench streams that catch all that, go through a separator before to make sure we keep everything out of the semi field. Uh, future, part of the storage bank is set up to where you can catch the runoff from the east side, run it to an underground storage system. And dissipate it or reuse it for recycling on site for landscaping.
Landscaping or possibly even, uh, for washing of the vehicles, trucks.
Yeah, because, uh, we have two bays on this that are capable of complete washdown. One is a long bay because they want to make sure we can bring the trucks to that. And the, this building is as insulated as we've ever done for a facility. So it should be very temperature stable. We're also relocating the waste oil from the existing facility to here. So they have the ability to heat the building by bringing off waste oil without going to the radiant heat or the unit heaters.
So the, the main building, the first base, what's the actual size of it?
20,000, going for 20,000 square feet on page three at the top of the page. It's 186, usually the square foot is there.
So it's a little less than half an acre, but in terms of, um, 200 by 500, what is it?
It's, uh, it's, it's wired this at 80 and then it becomes 70 by 175.
And we've added a bay on the end that'll accommodate the buildings, our truck.
Kind of a key element, this was a truck.
And we still have the overheads on the van in the building for equipment that can be put underneath the seat on the line here later.
Right.
And when you look at the perimeter up here, that's where your diesel facility parks, they have powerful, uh, pedestal out there. So they are a place to plug in to keep them ready when you need it.
So what Ramir was talking about before was that the plan was to have all on this east side is water catching into what we have thrown here is a future underground system, 15,000 gallons. So we show one, I mean, you could have multiple ones, you could have one west end, catch all of that. So that is a consideration.
And so just all the, the ground, the roof is tight and the others, oversized areas should catch it.
So I, I understand that, uh, you know, we haven't gone to many processes yet in terms of the buildings, materials and stuff. And we'll get a contractor to do it, but very close to this facility, this proposed facility, there is a, a plant that manufactures the metal components of that. And I would hope that they would be able to involve, somehow fit on it and, and it would lower the price.
Madam Chair.
I have no idea how. But I think it is.
That's something we can ask the people here.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Just real quick, it's unusual to have more value in the law than the proof. What happened to, to the front office area? We have the R25 is a new code of the building. So we have to reach out to the, to the, the envelope itself. And on the office area, we opted to go with an R19 instead of an R13 because the cost difference was minor. And we have an area separation between the inner wall and the outer wall. So it's also to keep sound from one third. But also if you just fit to follow R38? R38 is, uh, what we figured for the space that's available at this time. I can speak to this. Yeah.
Any other questions? And well, are we thinking about?
Madam, uh, I don't prefer that to, Breach is right here. Yeah, Madam Chair, this is one of the items that we've been talking about it in previous commission meetings that we're waiting on El Bravo, water sanitation district to drill their well and get the water across the street. Um, we're still not holding that. Um, we can go to construction without their well being complete. Or, or we do need water by the fall of this year. I don't know if it's changed, but, uh, we're talking, we need the water by this fall. Um, we had mentioned in the past about maybe throwing in with the terraced house, uh, drilling the well, or doing our own well. And, uh, back then, there's been consensus of commission to wait for El Bravo. Um, this has some drawbacks, we're waiting for El Bravo. So, uh, so at this point, we're still waiting on El Bravo to finish their well and get the water across the street to us.
Good. That was, I talked to John Pena not long ago. He got spelled out, of course, but it looks good. That one looks good. I think, uh, because I think he did probably leaving, uh, the phone there, like, we'll see.
Thank you so much.
And here, Madam Commissioner.
Madam Chair, so the, our next, uh, phase is that we would go to RBC Capital's, Union Club, Manager Cordeau wanted to bond against the project. But regarding the tax increment on the loan that we pay off and that the rest, the balance would come from the cash reserves, uh, what we can bond. So we'll look into the bonding, now we're forward to the project.
Who would you like us to put this for now?
We're gonna put it on that table or, or holding that, I think it's in there.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, next, under presentations, item C, we have a presentation regarding flooding and one-off season. Bogaziz, Concierge, our director, and Mark, our speaker, our coordinator.
Good morning, Vice Chair Donald. Commissioner, this is Manager Stradie. Um, this is why I designed some information for the chief post to mention all of our, some of our study issues that we've already had in the county. Um, we've begun site assessments myself and the coordinator to assess some of the more of the front areas. Um, and we issued out every satellite city and visual brand requested. We also, uh, Friday, we had picked up a satellite machine from the city of Ostvivius, San Diego County. It is a home security satellite machine that is designated to San Diego County. Uh, we did a mutually systems, a state mutually system request and approved by myself and the Boolean Director for San Diego County. Um, now we're waiting for Mr. Clutch to, to finish up all that and working the projects that they have to get the skister on site. So we inspired them to bag it. The machine holds about three yards. It's a pretty simple system to use. And it does about four bags on each. So all we have to worry about is tightening the bags. We're utilizing our facilities at the, uh, we have building in the Yonka Valley to store all the bags. We're gonna put it under our porch, we've got the Ford pallets, and we're gonna store them on our, again, some of the tarsh to keep them from exposure from the sun, you know, that the satellites tend to deteriorate. So we're gonna do that. Um, I reached out to the Sector Association to see if we can get contact information from Ali and Aradomas. Um, those are some of the bigger concerns that we've had against the sector as we're going. So we want to make sure we have all their contacts. So if we get called, I mean, we can have their phone numbers available. Um, we're hoping tomorrow that we can start doing the bagging itself, um, possibly this afternoon if they're finished with the satellite, uh, skisters, sorry. Um, and we grabbed some boats out of Penasco, about the area, we dispersed 30 bags of sand to the individuals out there. We have gone through, uh, I remember on Chico's Road, there's an issue on Cortez Bay. And myself and one have been monitoring, monitoring that on a daily basis to make sure that there's no issues. One of the homes down at the end has a well, and in the past, it's gotten pretty close to getting an explosion contamination. So we're checking on it with that as we go along.
I'll try to, Madam Chair, if they do so, um, have you looked at any areas in Talbo?
In Talbo, we've gone up, initially, we've gone up to, uh, the Talbo area a few times. Mark has driven that area quite good to make sure that the rising isn't too, too bad. Mark has driven that area quite good to make sure that the rising isn't too bad, and one of the banks are pretty close to that area, so Myers can continue to monitor. And we've had some boats already show up to the old building with some concerns, so...
Have you been in contact with Darrell and Izzard?
Not as of yet, sir.
I have looked, I think it was in front, some contact information where they live in that meadow, off of Myastus and Five Eighteen, where his father owns that meadow, looking for his property.
Yes, sir.
It was flooding since about two weeks ago, so I was wondering if you guys had gone out there. There is one house that belongs to Nora Anthony at the very bottom next to the river, and it flooded, I believe, in two thousand seventeen. And two weeks ago, the water was already surfaced. It wasn't necessarily flooding, it was just kind of permeating through the soil.
Yes, sir. We'll go out there this afternoon and monitor that area and speak with the individuals if they need assistance from us, or if they have bags. Some of the things that we want to make sure is the liability, like private dams and stuff like that, we utilize our equipment, especially from the Public Works Department. So from one, I'm just monitoring if it has to come to that point, or then. We've also been in contact with our recorder engineers to try to be, like, readily available so they know that if any beaver dams are causing the water issues, we can get their assistance to try to remove some of those beaver dams. And gave it this as well, so we can trap the beavers and relocate them. We did have an issue last week in Ricardo, right next to San Pablo Bank, there was some flooding from a beaver dam on the Palpo side, and they gave us permission to get onto the property to take some trenching, and we diverted that water back into the river, and that was by the time it got to San Diego, so...
So is there a funding available? You know, obviously, we always act after it's happening, and is there a way that we can do these things, like clear rivers out, you know, a year in advance, like what's happened since last fall? Not that we know that it's gonna rain or snow a lot or flood a lot, but if we could react to these things in advance instead of waiting for things to happen, how can we do that for now?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, we've been talking to our fire department, home security, to see if there's any grants that are available to assist us with trying to do some more preparations and preventative maintenance on those Secu's and the rivers. Some of the big issues, we still have to go through the process through our recorder engineers. So we've reached out to them and seen what their process would be as far as applications go, and giving us the best that we can be able to go in there and remove some of the debris that's in there. So home security, our fire department's gonna keep in contact with us to let us know if there's anything available, but to assist with that.
What does your contact phone number?
For myself, it's gonna be, my cell phone is five seven five seven seven nine nine three eight one.
Nine three eight one?
Yes. And Mark or David's cell phone number is five seven five seven seven nine three eight two zero.
Okay. I'd like for you to talk to Mr. Russell or Darrell and Izzard just as soon as possible.
Definitely.
I've been busy the last week, so I'm not sure what the situation is there.
Okay. Do you have a definitely have a touch with him?
Commissioner, any questions? Coming. What's the procedure to give the sandbags? Do they go to the road yard, or do you deliver? What's your...
So currently, we are gonna house up the old building, and we can deliver it to the locations that are needed. We're gonna try to do twenty-five sandbags, and if there's any more requested, we're gonna have to do a site assessment, so we can keep better track of all of the sandbags that may be around dispersed throughout the upcoming weeks. We are working with the fire departments and Chief Cordeau to see if we can house them in different locations across the area of Penasco in their facilities so they can disperse if we're out of district and stuff like that. So those are some of the plans that we're making right now. Mr. Project Buck has offered to assist us with delivering, and as well as the sheriff has offered his assistance with delivering if we need to. And myself and Mark are ready to respond after hours.
Just as the bloodied field residents that you have distributed the sandbags?
Yes, we...
Okay. And then your calls coming in as far as...
So far, they've been the ones that have called us out, they have some concerns with another area, just from their residents. We assess them to the area a little bit, and we told them to just keep monitoring as the time goes by. They didn't know who was the one to drive properties, so we told them to keep making sure it's okay.
And I think you spoke with David Cruz in El Valle.
Yes.
And what I've learned is the Secu's can go directly to the state and ask for emergency assistance. It's on a reversible basis, so that's good information for other Secu's to, they don't have to go through the county for us to declare emergency.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Under Presentations, it's a presentation regarding the twenty twenty census complete count, and we have Marissa Santi Seven. Thank you for meeting today.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to us. Thank you for having me this morning. This is Marissa Santi Seven, and I am a partnership specialist at the Census Bureau. Welcome, thank you. I'm here today to talk about our next great adventure, which is going to be the twenty twenty census. I have brought my institution's funders, so you are welcome to reach out to me. I'm the partnership specialist that will be working in Santa Fe and Alamo, so we'll figure it out. The first question a lot of people encounter when they talk to their constituents is, do we have to do the census? And the short answer is yes. As you see each, as we make presentations, you'll see me do this. Article one, section two, that is the area of the Constitution which says we must do this every ten years. So if you say, do we have to? Yes, absolutely, that's our popular answer. One of the things that we put a lot of emphasis on at the Census Bureau is our protection of the information that we collect. Title thirteen is the federal law that protects all of the information that is submitted to the census. We by law do not share that information with law enforcement. We do not share it with IRS. Census data is very unique, and that we are the only ones who hold that data, and it's only released if citizens are performing. As many of you know, being in the quotable form, that census numbers have a very direct connection to our democracy, and the first word when people come to see them is the abortion rate. The census and the numbers decide how abortion works out, and you'll see from the figure of the twenty ten, when people talk about states that won or lost in the last census, they're talking about representation. So you can see here, the states that lost representation has a sort of decreased kind of population, places like Illinois, Louisiana, and the states that acquired more representation because of their population. You can see there that Texas really did a lot for this one. So one of the things that we really strive for is to make sure that we have an accurate count because we need accurate representation here in Mexico. Those are our advocates in Washington, and so we really need to make sure that all the population is accurate, so we get all the representation and funding that we're implementing. Funding is a better way, next to with the census. New Mexico receives approximately eight billion dollars in federal funding. George Washington University has compiled a course for each of the states that showed the connection between the census numbers and how that translates funding for our communities in our states. I've included just a great snapshot from George Washington, the university, on that information. And on the following slide, you can access their spreadsheets, which go into much greater detail on things like Medicaid, how much of New Mexico's money comes from that just for Medicaid. That's a very good, other measure, given the numbers that are poorly, poverty line, our senior population, that's a big area where we see that that federal funding comes like day in, day out for our citizens. And under the abortion census data, because we aim to have it so accurate, and it is the basis of a lot of the decisions that we make, the decisions that come out of that are often controversial, they're used to redraw batteries, and because our data is the source that you vote to, you'll see just a couple of posts I've put there that states you needed to disagree with some of this later. This area has this many people, this area should be represented. I mean, that is essentially the argument that it makes. So this is an example that even though we do the census every ten years, this information that passes every year, every election, every lottery, this comes into place with census is very much a part of our database. For our population, we aim to count everyone once, only once, and where they live. The twenty twenty census is going to be the most advanced that we've ever had, and we have really put a lot of emphasis in the power to the individual and to response. So of my prior censuses, where it was nailed out, we had to wait for it to return, this time, we are going to have additional response options. The first will be online. Our website for that will go live on March twenty-third in twenty twenty. Individuals that are headlining would like to use that, I'm thinking to it. We will also have a postal system, the time individuals who are not wanting to go online, or should telephone, they can call and get assistance in a language that they need. We will continue to do postal mail. The key difference this time being that because we are gonna have this electronic case, census takers will only be going to those households that did not respond. And because we will have more information coming in as those responses come in, the more self-response we have, the more taxpayer funds we save. We really want to only census the takers to those individuals, those households that did not respond, because they might genuinely need help. One thing I know I hear a lot is, I really don't want to do these forms without any help. For our populations that maybe lack internet connectivity, or they feel more comfortable having someone to work with, that is a number of previous to taxpayer funds. We really much encourage self-response to that we can save, those needs to reach out to members of the community that really need it. The census is actually done in several languages. The languages that we have chosen are those based on the American Community Survey. A little sample that we do every year, amongst those ten, informs the languages that the communities are related to. So based on that, we have provided the twelve non-English languages that the census will be in, and the telephone option, we're gonna have a couple different variations of the The census is a big job, and like many big jobs, it's a lot that are going to break down in the census. So these are the communications pieces that we're using to get us to the community of how this really big job is wanting to happen. The first phase that we're in now is the education phase. Why do we do the census? Why is it important? Why should we really put effort into this? So this is what we're really working on with the communities to know that by its very definition, the census is done by the people and for the people. So it's everyone's job to participate and to do what they can. The awareness phase will begin in January twenty twenty, and that's where we let people know the census is happening. This is our big year, get ready. For my part, I always remind family members and kids that are under ten years old, you're gonna have a more nice standard. These topics are about who is in your household, who lives with you, because we do it by household. So we might have individuals, one example, where there are several individuals who are not related, but they do live together. Recorders, that's another thing we'll also be doing in January twenty twenty. Looking at this like senior living positions, long-term kind of social status. So recorders is another piece that we go into, because we really look at where people are living. April first, twenty twenty is census date. That is our official, as of this date, this is the population. So there, for the summer, we will be encouraging people to self-respond, and then for any of those individuals who do not, those are the individuals that will see a census taker coming to their home. One of the things that you have under consideration today is the establishing of a complete census committee. And the importance of a complete census committee is really your opportunity to designate who in the community are the influences, influencers. Who are the ones who know those areas where there are people living, but may not look like there's nothing out there, right? We want you to collect individuals that are familiar with your community, individuals that are known in the community, and that really understand this information in a part that, to say, this is really important for everyone. Some of our most successful committees, they include a wide range of individuals. One example I do is the realtor example, right? Who knows the community? Who knows the houses filled empty for winters, right? Somebody from the real estate community, somebody who's heard of my community, maybe knows from the big base area, churches that, you know, really stand out in the community, individuals know them and recognize them. These are the types of individuals you want to prepare for your community and committee. And providing an example of what this might look like as you meet with them, considering the education phase, how do you want to put out to the community that this is happening? The motivation phase, how are we gonna encourage people to do the census? Right now, per capo that we get from George Washington is about thirty-five hundred per person. So Commissioner Romero, if you opt in to not do the census, and you have not counted, New Mexico loses thirty-five hundred a year, per year, for ten years. One example is Popols Don't Care. Popols Don't Care proved it, but we know that we need that they get back. And the only way to try to get all the federal funding complete or entitled to, because all of us are up in terms, is to do the census, right? Every year, taxes take out a little from us, this is the time where that money comes One of the tools that the Census Bureau uses to help you identify those areas where you're going to need outreach, we call the Response Outreach Area Network. So I will tell you, don't go home alone. This will give you a lot of insights in your community without having to run reports or anything like that. You're probably familiar with the Outlook, do you have? It's very similar to what you're using right now. So to give you an example of how it works, you can select the census tract. So for our offices today, I pull tabs through. So that census tract is ninety-four oh one. So you'll see from the slide that I've provided, it gives you the total population of that census tract, about nine thousand one hundred forty-nine people in there. We can get this information so you can see what types of outreach we're going to need to. One area that I know a lot of folks look to is Horn Line. Eight percent of that census tract is Horn. So those are the individuals we have to talk to, and be sure to say, everyone does the census, everybody counts. I know there is some concern right now, is that Supreme Court considers the census questioning, but the one thing that it must note is that everyone counts, regardless of various things we're doing. So those are the individuals that, if they are not counted, everyone is underrepresented and under served. So those are the types of things you'll wanna look at. As you consider with your community, what are the areas that we do not want to leave out? We want to make sure we include everyone. Or those areas, who can you have on our team to include? So this is the bottom half snapshot of the information we'll give you in the morning. So this breaks down those individuals who can be bushed. That is on another device, so while we can have this language, and the census in so many additional languages, we need individuals out there to a part of that in those languages to say, this is important, this is for everyone, everyone knows. I've included some key collection dates, so you can have an idea of when things are happening. Our first major operation is called Address Council. So like David now, you wanna check your address book and make sure you have the right ones. This is something we do. One example in partnership with the Postal Service, looking at current addresses, what are current, what are non-deliverable. That's one piece that we use, and hire a lot of individuals during this phase to be out of the community, to say, ah, this vacant, used to be an apartment building, it is no longer, there are no residences there. Or this is new construction that is taking place, we're gonna have new people in this area, so we need to be ready for those addresses. Again, that big date I put on there, March twenty-third, self-response online goes live, that will be a big tool for us, but we want everyone to know ahead of time what it is and why they want to access that. This is my favorite part, this is the money part, where we talk about individuals and not just the states. For the twenty ten census, we hired one point three million temporary individuals to work for the census. The census, because it is a big job, we are hiring actively, we are hiring now, we will be individuals for entrance cases, we'll be individuals for that education phase, to be putting the word out there. Once those individuals, once we come through and see how many households that we're finding needed, we move them out there and go and say, hi, how's it going? But didn't see that they had your response to the census. One of the key reasons we want to put this information out so far ahead of time is because twenty twenty is a big year for another group, that's the election, right? There will be several different types of individuals going to, community members going to, hi, who are you voting for? Hi, community congregation. We want to empower them to know that if you complete the census, there will not be a census taker coming to the program. You can know that because you have self-responded, anyone else coming might be there for political purposes and not for census purposes. One of the reasons we are hiring early is because everyone is required to have a check, and I can take a little bit. You have to be at least seventeen to apply, eighteen to work. I always encourage our high school students as they're graduating, the favorites for Santa Fe and Elmer here is about fifteen fifty, and also almost fourteen in town, and it's paid weekly, so it's a very... So it's a very, I think, job, it's temporary, it's in the community where individuals are going to work. So we really want to encourage individuals to join the census team and not only help New Mexico get that funding in, but it makes money on site. Part-time, full-time, lots of flexibility in these positions. So I would encourage you also in your relations with the community to encourage individuals to look at that. Questions? I can start my show.
Mr. President. You said, can you explain that, or maybe you come to, is that the point to be from different communities? Is that ideally, that's one of, if somebody's neighbor is to be the employee of the census, the best person to go off the doors?
Absolutely. We want to hire people where they work in the community session.
Do you have a copy of the census that was going to be approved this week?
The question, I don't have a copy of it, but I can follow it through the other team.
And is it a one-page or two-page? How many pages is that?
The census itself will have 11 questions thus far. We are waiting from the Supreme Court decision, we'll have to add another question there. But the time it takes, based on what we've seen, is about as much time as it takes for the credit for application.
So 11 questions, so it should be just one page? Yes, we'd like a copy.
I will follow up with you.
All right, thank you so much.
If anyone has any questions, the other information is there and I will give you questions.
Our next items are resolutions and ordinances. Oh, I'm sorry, we are going to have to be approval of minutes, is that correct?
To the proclamation.
Oh, not formation, oh, sorry. All right, so presentations, I am E. We have a proclamation, corrections, officers week. And our scheme county managers want to read it out for me.
I'd like to thank the detention staff, the magistrate commissioners. I know we've been through a lot over the last 10 months and managed very hard. So it's good that we do this proclamation, the proclamation, the correction, officers week. Whereas the task county detention staff were carried away to help the residents of Task County and our citizen join the routines of their daily lives in a safe environment. And whereas the Task County employs a professional detention staff, without them, it would be impossible to attain the foremost goals and achievements that make Task County a safe place. And whereas the Task County Board of Commission recognizes the sacrifice of these brave men and women of our detention staff, they demonstrate their unmatched self-reslessness and their service in the most stressful situations. And whereas the members of the detention staff are ready to provide life-saving care to those in the 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the members of our detention staff, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas Task County Detention Staff has never refused their country's call, so we, the citizens of Task County, wish to express a lasting gratitude to these special men and women of our community. Let us show our appreciation by honoring our detention staff by giving them the extraordinary gratitude that silver and right they deserve. And therefore, it would be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of Task County, New Mexico, that on the week of May 6, 2019, shall be known and designated and set aside as detention staff week in Task County, New Mexico.
Thank you.
Can I get a speech?
So on behalf of my staff and my cell, and everybody I work with, it has been hard, I grant this mentioning, and we do appreciate everything that you guys do to help us. And as we move forward, we continue to look for your guys' support and hope that we can continue to serve the community the best we can. Thank you.
Staff, is that one of you? Good smile. Thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work and the long hours. All right, now we're moving to resolutions and ordinances. Item A is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2019-20, a resolution authorizing the establishment of and guidelines for the operation of 2020 U.S. Census Complete Count Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner. Included in the package is a resolution that I'm asking for you to adopt today, which is lays out our Complete Count Committee. This committee would be comprised of seven members. And we also be eligible for some state appropriations. We need to have a committee forum to apply for state dollars to also for the education component of it and for any ads. And it's not that much funding that the state allocated, but this is one of the methods that we would use to obtain state funding. We'd probably also use some county funding as well for, to contribute to the ads. And so I recommend approval of this resolution.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 2019-20 authorizing establishment of the operation of the 2020 U.S. Census Complete Count Committee.
I'll second Mr. Chair.
Madam Chair.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution of establishing the Complete Count Committee for Task County. Please call.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ogun.
Yes, thank you. All right, now we're moving on to Item B, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2019-21, a resolution imposing an ad-halor tax for the benefit of the El Prado Water and Sanitation District.
Uh, Madam Chair, one of my special moments here from El Prado today, but this is the annual resolution that the House asked to propose for that ad-halor tax which benefits El Prado Water Sanitation District. I also recommend approval.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Doherty had a question if this was county-wide or is it just within their district?
It's just within their sanitation district.
With that, I approve for approval of Resolution 2019-20 on the ad-halor tax for the El Prado Water Sanitation.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-21, a resolution imposing an ad-halor tax for the benefit of the El Prado Water and Sanitation District. Please call.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ogun.
Yes, thank you. Now we move on to Item 11, contracts, agreements, MLUs, and DIDs. This is a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding Amendment Number Two to a memorandum of agreement between Taos County and Taos Health Systems Incorporated. I see we have Mr. Patton, Phil Patton, CEO of the hospital. Would you please like to educate on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good morning. Some years ago, when the original Mill Levee, 2016, was passed, the language of the ballot allowed for the use of that money for repair and maintenance of the hospital building, acquisition of capital equipment, and operations. Since that time, the hospital has, or that health center has self-limited the use of the money. During the campaign, we actually made a commitment that we would only use the money for repairs to the building, making some building and capital equipment. And we made the honor of that pledge. However, given the ongoing financial condition of the hospital, we believe that it is a responsible thing to do to allow the option to use Mill Levee money for operations. The amendment that's been presented to you is a step in that direction. The idea is that we would use the same processes that have been previously defined in the memorandum for capital equipment and for repair and maintenance on the building. And this is adding a new provision that would allow for accessing Mill Levee money for operational uses. The one comment I would make, the language as proposed seems to anticipate and annualize budgeting of operational uses. From the health center's perspective, we view this more as an emergent or you might think of it as a line of credit type of access. It is our desire to honor the original commitment we made and only use Mill Levee money for operations as a last resort. Given that scenario, it's difficult for us, from an annualized budgetary perspective, to be able to anticipate at what time during the year operational money might be needed. And so one of the questions that I would ask is, what is the commission's anticipation as it relates to that Section A of the revised memorandum? Is that an annualized thing? Or is it something that we could, if we needed to, on an as-needed basis approach with a request? But it is our desire to update the memorandum to allow for the use of Mill Levee money for operations.
Could we please see the referenced language? Could you clarify whether you just put items to speaking to that?
If I may, Madam Vice Chair, at the top of page number one, there's the first bullet point on the annual process for operations. If you scroll down a little bit, back another way, there is now capture A1 and 2. So it's very, very relevant. That's the process that was drafted.
Mr. Patton, would you suggest?
So as I read that, that seems to anticipate an annualized approach. And it would be difficult when we do our budget. We're on a June-May fiscal year. So if we were to, in November, for example, have a cash flow issued that we needed Mill Levee money for, it would be difficult for us to anticipate that when we submitted our budget earlier in the year. And if I could add further, so as the attorney has pointed out, it would be for A1, present a budget for supporting documentation in the proposal reflecting operational maintenance uses proposed in their projected cause. Approve operations, maintenance funding should be funded. If that is allowed on an ongoing basis, if it's not a once-a-year thing, then that language could work. I just want to make sure that I understand the timing intent of the language.
And if I may, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Patton, this was an attempt to capture a mechanism to do an accounting and to do budgeting. So I had no intent in the language to either ensure that it's done every year or to say it should only be done in a regular season. So it's really whatever the commission and the hospital wish to have as a funding mechanism. So it could be upon a as-needed basis with a request brought to the commission, as Mr. Patton suggested. That, there's nothing deeply wrong with that, it's really what is functioning.
And Madam Chair, I may, with that clarification, then the language is presented, it certainly makes up a good, I would say.
What I would envision, Madam Chair, Commissioners, would simply be a process whereby, if annually, there is, when there's a presentation done by the hospital for proposed funding for the other commanders that are brought forward, the capital improvements and so forth, that it be stated that there's no money requested at this time and you're deserving the right to bring that issue for operations and maintenance back to the commission on an as-needed basis for the commission to prove.
So do you agree the resolution will stand as it is?
I think it works.
Anyone have comments or questions?
If everyone's comfortable with the language that we have before us, then I will make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Amendment Number Two to a memorandum of agreement between Taos County and Taos Health. Please call.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ogun.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, you want to move forward or take a break? All right, we're now on our consent agenda. They've been reviewed for the purpose of voting on all items with one vote. The items listed are for the commission's consideration and decision. Item A, item A, approval of a budget adjustment for Carson Fire District, 0222-GAP-562, Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Approval of a budget adjustment for New Mexico Clean and Beautiful, 2329-1979, Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Item C, approval of a budget adjustment for the Fleet Department, 0101-1127, Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Item G, approval of a budget adjustment for Facilities Department, 0101-1090, Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Item E, approval of a budget adjustment for the County Treasurer, 0101-0300, Lupe Martinez. Item F, approval of a budget adjustment for the Sero Fire District, 0209-1551, Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Item G, approval of a budget adjustment for the State EMS Fund, 0206-1500, Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Item H, approval of a budget adjustment for E911 Central Communications, 0207-0911, again Lupe Martinez Finance Director. Item I, approval of out-of-state travel for actual reimbursement for Lupe Martinez Finance Director to attend the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers Annual Conference from July 8th through the 12th of this year in Clark County, Nevada. Item J, approval of out-of-state travel on actual reimbursement for Gilberto Marmillo to attend the Honeywell Training in Phoenix, Arizona, June 9th through the 14th of this year. Item K, approval for out-of-state travel for John Wilson and on actual reimbursement. to attend the Annual Fire Rescue Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, August 7 through the 10th of this year, Michael Cordova, County Fire Chief, James Hampton, Fire Marshal for Jonah Olson to actually attend the pre-conference as well. Item now, approval of out-of-state travel for Susan Terhio, County Treasurer, and Paula Santa Stepan, Chief Deputy Treasurer, to attend the National Association of Counties Clerks, Treasurers, and Finance Officers in Las Vegas, Nevada, July 8 through the 12th of this year, Susan Terhio, County Treasurer. Item M, approval of out-of-state travel for Tammy Marmillo, Healthcare Assistance Program Director, to attend the National Association of Counties Conference in Las Vegas, Nevada, July 11 through the 15th. Item N, approval of the audit contract by between Taos County and Cordova CPAs LLC for the period ending June 30, 2019. Item O, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of a new fire tender apparatus of the Rio Grande Fire Department, Michael Cordova, County Fire Chief, and James Hampton, Fire Marshal. Final item is item P, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of TCC 2017-05A, A3R2 Summit Food Services LLC, TCDC, Paul Mayes, its intern director, Adult Detention Center. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda. Agenda, are there any items?
Madam Chair, I just had a question, comments. But I'm looking for approval of all the items A through P on the consent agenda.
Second.
There is a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. Please call.
Commissioner Penbro.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meadle.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, a question real quick. The dates from item M, Marmillo, is it the same conference that's all going to? Because that one is July of '15, and the others are July 8 through the 12th.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Meadle, there's actually two separate conferences that are held at the same location. So, the first conference is for year to the treasurers and finance officers. The second is just the regular NACO conference.
I see, okay. Susan goes to the slot. Okay.
The comment I have is, in the future, would it be possible to have more Fire District Chiefs attending these kind of conferences? I mean, did you able to reach out to them and see if anyone else wanted to go to the Fire Rescue Office?
Madam Chair, I'll pass that on to Chief Cordova. Generally, Fire, former Fire Chief Joe Nelson is a presenter at a lot of different conferences. It's been a while we see her name on the agenda because she's a national presenter. I'll pass that on to Chief Cordova as well.
We are now moving on to government matters. Item A is a presentation on the 2019-2020 Assessor's Plan. We really miss our county assessor. Let me see if I can get situated.
Good morning, Miss Vice Chair, Commissioners, Manager, Mr. Teo, members of the public. Just really brief, I took office January 2, 2019, and to date, we have brought in over $33 million, 14-plus million net new, 19 million, or 18 million plus in value maintenance. We have reached out to the communities, and we have gone to state representatives. I went ahead and I held a meeting agreed for the public as well. And so, I am here because we need to stay focused on our plan to continue to bring in some money for Taos County. Bringing in money means that we need to get the values correct. I do have a plan. I know that we haven't had a full reapable in over 10 years. And in order to be able to complete that, I need to have the capital and train staff to be able to meet that. Getting started, we go to the data collection. I think it's the cap which we're doing. Okay. We have our data collection that we have to do. And getting the data collection, we need to be able to reach out to different property owners and continue to work with the public as well as holding on to that old data so that we can do an analysis on that. Excuse me, a little nervous here. So, let me see. I think we have a workflow. I do have a workflow and process where I do have some teams coming in. I have the building permits and sales. And right now, I am short-staffed. I have the need of staff, like, in the worst way. Some of the county is not mapped in. The most town is probably going to be the northern part of the county simply because we haven't had the tools to be able to do that mapping in. And we want to move forward with that. And with doing that, we need to estimate how much staff I have out and analyze what they can bring in and how many properties they can visit per day. And, let me go to the next one. There are three costs to assessing the value of properties. First is the cost. We have updated the formal margin list. It's now core logic. And we use that to be able to value the properties correctly and to be fair and equitable. The next one is the income approach. It's to work commercials. Businesses bring in their income statements to us. We review them and we give them a tab on whatever it is that they're bringing in to us. And then, the last is a comparable. And actually, that's, you know, all those three values are really the way that we look at valuing properties. Whenever we're valuing, we're here to be fair and equitable. A lot of people look at us a little different because if you're from the assessment office, you're here to raise our values. Well, we're the valuing people. We want to get those numbers right because if we're fair with everyone across the board, it may mean that your taxes may come down and the bill rate won't be as high. So, whenever you're looking at upping that budget, you're looking at our office to make sure that our values are correct and fair. And so, that's what we're about. Our office is statute-driven. You're all aware of it, that we answer to the state. And whatever the state tells us to do, we're the messenger. We are not the people that make the bills. So, I have vacant positions at this point. I need a nine-person, or rather, two. I need a mobile home appraiser. I need a personal property appraiser. Personal property appraiser, we haven't had one in forever, I suppose. And those are the ones that actually go out to businesses to inventory what they have so that we can tax their equipment as well. I know that we've reached out to them, but we haven't had one in place. The other is a commercial appraiser. A lot of times, people will put up a brand-new building and it takes us a little while to get there and pick it up. And when I'm holding that values as far as commercial goals as well, we have the building that just went up next door. What is it, the native business, the Silly Deal? You know, they have their equipment here. We're going to have some that really need it. They have there for parking their trucks and bringing their equipment to house. So, I don't know how many of those have been missed prior. But, you know, I want to be able to reach out to these people and do this right. I only think it's fair for the entire county to gain from that. And that's my pocketbook and your pocketbook. We've also visited over 850 properties. And we have a long way to go, a long way to go. And my staff has been just, you know, it's trying sometimes. You know, they're frustrated for various reasons. But with a plan in place, I feel that we can raise those numbers to be able to have more value in our county, to bring in more money to us. And so, with that being said, do you guys have questions on these?
Madam Chair, so, are you going to be able to hire these people, these people that you need?
I'm in the process of looking at the key people that I need. And I'll tell you what, a lot of times, what happens is, people come into the office and they look at how much work is required. I have had a minimal lot of occasions for that. I mean, the pay is just $1.17 starting pay when you figure that you have to go out in any type of weather. I expect in my approach to go out, you have the different elements. You know, the weather, the constituents themselves, they get frustrated to see us there because they know that we're there to assess. Then they have, we have the dogs that go in. I mean, you know, we've had dogs pull on us. And we have a lot of things happen. So, when you look at $1.17 an hour, the want is there, the need is there, but the pay just doesn't justify what I need to be able to move over. So, it's really difficult. Like I say, my staff has been through quite a bit. And I'm hoping that I'm able to pass that part of it once the money start coming in that you can actually see that we can do this. It's just going to take a lot more time than, you know, what I have right now or even my four years, you know, let's say if I run the other board. It's a challenge. It's a challenge to try to hire someone for $1.17 an hour when you don't have the ability to go, you know, and just not be a freak. I will tell you this, I'm going to use all the tools that have been used for a while. We have the telemetry. And I'm going to be using that tool as well as our tablets that we had previously. So, I'm going to be using those. And with staff in correct training, I'm hoping that we can do stuff so that we can bring that money to be able to hire and maybe move that rate up. But I really need some people. I just need people.
Madam Chair, what do you have a budget for in terms of staff?
I think I have my 1% fund. And I believe I'm like at $1 million. And that's the one that I would use for the reappraisal fund. That's what it's for. And it hadn't been used in a while, but I can beat my staff. I mean, I can't speak for the previous administrators. But I do know that I will be using that. That is not there for anything else other than for bringing in people and hopefully adjusting that rate so that I can attract people that are willing to come to Taos County and work.
Okay, so, obviously, the obvious question for you is, is management able to work with the conference?
Yes, we have been in discussions and we're still trying to figure out where we're at. But friends and group that I have met and was my chief deputy, Christina, and we're in discussions of it. But I really would like to see a little bit more as far as staffing goals for increase. If we don't have trained and knowledgeable staffing, I will not be able to accomplish.
Do you have questions? I have a couple of questions and comments out of the vacancies. What would you consider the first priority to fill?
Oh, my gosh, you're all priorities. I would say that the biggest priority right now is probably agricultural because a lot of those properties that are not being used as agricultural affect everybody. And so, I'm hoping to have a meeting with, I think, Darby, the Hill, and Jillian. I'm going to be meeting with them next week in regards to that. Because if I can meet with them and I can clarify with them and they have their following, then I can probably get in there and show them what needs to happen. The agriculture needs to be in production, they're more, they're qualified. And so, a lot of people that don't understand that part of it, I mean, you know, it all depends. You know, they just think that, well, I want how they're gay, so hopefully my Yankos comes by and visits, and then I'm gone. No, that's not it. It's got to be there. I think it's got to be worked. It's got to be part. You know, a lot of this older people that used to part their properties, they get a birdie, you know? They lay their land, they seed it, you know? They water it if need be. They go out and work on the aseces, you know, remove all the dregs so that the aseca could grow freely. I mean, you know, that is why that classification was put in place, was to help the smaller farmer. So, you know, most people, I want to be right. I want to ask them how fair they think it is for us to be paying their taxes.
Would the commercial appraisers are bringing more money? In other words, if you were to talk?
Yes, I understand. Yes, they probably, I mean, they're both equally important. I can't say one over the other. I mean, but my priority is to get that ag situated because of the situation that has been in place. And so many people are fearful that, you know, they're not getting their classification correct.
But the commercial appraisal, we're bringing more money? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what is a comment to our manager? What about contracting that out for a short period and giving just a contract salary? And you don't pay that much, you don't... Have you thought about that? And if that is possible, to contract out a commercial appraiser?
Well, let's see. I believe that you can probably put that out. I don't know what their contract would look like, what they're, they would be asking for as far as that goes. Because it's such a complex job all the way around, I don't know if we could, we could probably find someone. But I think the price would probably be a lot higher instead of hiring someone from the committee to be, you know, participating in that and recognizing that part.
Madam Chair, I think the commission is not quite understanding the county's system. What she means by the ag appraiser is, you know, we used to have a staff member that was dedicated to that. So, that hasn't happened over the years, over the last four years. What she's saying is she needs somebody that she can train up either within the department or hire somebody within. So, it's not, per se, somebody that has ag experience, that would be great, if we find somebody. But it is to go back to the way it was approximately four years ago, where a staff member would concentrate on ag. In other words, concentrate on mobile homes. Another one, on commercial. That's what she's referring to.
I understand. But if we were to bring in more money with a commercial appraiser, could we contract that for, say, six months to a year? And then, that person could also train in-house eventually? Just trying to make the methods. And who have questions to think about?
Yes, we didn't have those contracts for any... Yes, we can always contract for any position as well.
And I really appreciate the plan because I've really never seen anything like it before. Did I?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, it's a little scattered. I've had a lot of different issues going on, so I apologize for that. But in any case, my next plan that I will share with you will have all the nice colorful stuff like Lupe does with her finance, I'm going to be a super presentation. I like.
And so if you report fourteen million at new valuation, that means we see more money with new valuations. Because I mean, you indicated that in the report, the way we calculate. It's not yield control. So we're seeing, we'll see more money with that, absolutely. And I, from what you're saying, we're not yet in a downturn in the economy. The building permits are up, oil and gas prices are up. So I would just, I think, be more positive that we are not yet in a downturn. That doesn't mean we might not be by next year. But the tax economists forecast were pretty good right now. Zach, would you agree?
I want to share with you that Taus is always a little bit of a sore thumb, there is the country. We're on the land of Manana. And I think that that's why this values and this three months came to place because you just have to be positive and get people out there and do things. We could experience that, but we may not even see it just because this building permits that have been there for a while, the commercial, all the appraisings that we need to do and take care of, you know, along with our mapping department. If it won't be for our mapping and our GIS, you know, our records keeping, all those things that flow together, you know, we could probably not even feel that downturn. I think that we're going to go forward and just not even feel that, to be honest with you.
Commissioner? Yes, thank you, Chair. So if you find a agricultural property that's getting the exemption but doesn't qualify under the state law and you change it over and they end up paying more taxes, is that more revenue for the county? Or is that something that yield control ends up lowering other people's?
It's yield control, it'll lower other people's. But that would also be more money for the county. Because not everything's going to have to be paid as much. And so it's going to bring that up a little bit. It goes both, it'll do both. It'll bring more money in and the yield control doesn't really have like a lot to do with how that would work out for the entire county. And with that being said, it's not an exemption, it's a classification. A lot of people confuse those two words. And I need to be really clear because a lot of people think they're entitled to that. That's not entitlement, that is something that you need, Chair.
Yield control just helps residential property owners by limiting the increase to three percent.
Correct.
And sometimes those increases can come about just because people are paying more when they buy new houses, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Goes up. And then people who haven't sold their house, they're still faced with a higher bill because the assessed value of the property goes up. But yield control limits that to three percent increase.
The way that works is whenever a person purchases a home, we bring it to market value. The neighboring property does not necessarily get affected because they're logged in at that three percent a year. So when you look at those numbers, a lot of people are complaining, well, you know, I'm paying this amount. It's complex. You have to understand the way the state statute reads. So sales that move, those are absolutely going to be going up to market value. And the people that have been in their homes, like for example, I've been in my house thirty-four years. And you know, my tax bills don't look at all like someone that just purchased a house. I mean, I had a tax out of my house that I have to be paying currently correct because that protection isn't there.
But new construction is all new revenue for us?
Absolutely.
And are you finding that there's buildings out there that haven't been permitted?
Yes, I am. And that, I just had a limited assessment coming through earlier this year. And I believe that's going to bring in like, I'm thinking like twenty-five thousand dollars into the county for the one time because they were omitted. So I, I have to, I mean, it's something I have to do.
You mentioned the new construction that has been permitted?
No, that's why I need new people.
Is that, is that, is it the agriculture, the buildings that are permitted? Or the buildings that aren't permitted? Are they all?
It's all of it, all of it, even mobile homes. You know, there's some mobile homes that are in Taus that we have not had record of. And those are, I mean, those are minimal, but we still need for this values to come in so that everything's paying their fair share. We have to be fair and equitable.
Any estimate of how much we're losing on that?
On the whole entire pipe?
Just by not having enough.
Staff? I can say at least two million, three million dollars.
A year in taxable?
Absolutely.
And, and would it increase, would more staff increase the collection rate, our ninety percent collection rate?
I'm not sure. I think that would be a question for the treasurer. However, if I do have proper staffing, trained staffing, I mean, right now I have a medical park that is protesting their value, we're in district court, and I have Tarleton's Ranch. I, you know, those people already get a good tax break from the federal government. You know, those big corporations, and then they don't want to pay their fair share to the county. I think that's not right, you know? And so I am in the process of visiting with, I think, Carol Levy, who's representing the medical park. We're going to be having mediation going on here. And one of our really strong staff members to make the argument alongside with me is Michael Hooning. And then there's Daniel Rayel, that totally understands the appraisal process. Pretty much everyone in our office knows that the appraisal process brings in that money. And don't even my staff, then you'll see we can break this county really quick. It's kind of flatline, just like it did the past four years, but not having people to go work.
How much of a billion dollars opposed to our bottom line?
I'm not real sure. That just depends on the mail rate, to be honest with you, you know? Probably like maybe twenty-five, I'm not sure. I'd be lying to you. I don't, I didn't bring a calculator alongside with me. But in any case, you can probably do the calculations there depending on the mail rate and what the information there would be. But we are missing out on some values, people. And we really need to get the knowledgeable staff trained and move forward with this plan. So I'm hoping I have your support.
In, in terms of new areas or newly built areas like Tauski Valley, maybe Seepooh, how does it look in those areas?
I have staff that's been going out there periodically. Of course, Tauski Valley had a very shaky season because they had raised in Onslow and Seepooh. At this point, what I was hoping to do is I was hoping to be able to send some people up there and start from the bottom, from the top of the mountain and hit the bottom all the way down along with commercial, just the entire areas, you know? Or Tauski Valley, Red River, and Seepooh. I mean, Taus is not like Santa Fe or the other counties were unique. I mean, we have those ski areas. And a lot of times people say, well, we're getting the value that Santa Fe brings in. I mean, you know, I could probably surpass Santa Fe if I have the proper staff.
So you mentioned the mapping issue. And I think we still need to work with our planning and E nine one one. And work together, have a light on mapping. I would really like to see more money for our rural addressing because that in the long run helps you locate properties, give them on the books, and also for our census. So it all kind of ties in together.
Right.
Probably be working with the planning department.
I've been working really close with the director, Edward Reale. And we're communicating and trying to collaborate and get things together as far as that goes. All our departments use the assessment's information, I mean, each one of them. For locating, for being able to go forward with the planning and building permits and that kind of stuff. The treasurers, they collect from the information we provide for them. The clerks, you know, they go to our office for the warranty needs and the verification of other information that they may need, you know? So I just feel like if I continue to work together side by side, there's nowhere Taus County can't be. So I am working closely with Mr. Reale.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Last chance, you would, thanks, have a nice day, face.
Like to entertain a motion for a five minute break?
Second.
Commissioner Faber?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don?
Yes. Right, we're calling this meeting back to order. And we're continuing with, I mean, thirteen B discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of multi award for RFP two thousand nineteen dash oh four medical and social outreach services.
Vice Chair? Point of order, we need to come back in a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Coming back to regular session, need a motion in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Faber?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes.
Your word?
Yes, Ms. Allison Reale, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioner, Vice Chair. Before you open the packet is a staff recommendation. The Taus County Department received nine responses to our bullish RFP two thousand nineteen dash four for medical and social outreach services for Taus County prior to the deadline of two P M. Mountain Center time on Monday, March, June, two thousand nineteen. The authors who responded were Taus Coalition to End Homelessness, Committee Against Violence, Las Coles Community Services, Special Care Medical Services, Holy Press Hospital Medical Center for Cancer Services, Rock Mountain Youth Corps, Tausful Community Health, Masco Muni Bad, and Inside Out. Based on the review and interviews conducted for this RFP, staff recommends to award RFP two thousand nineteen oh four for medical and social outreach services to Taus Coalition to End Homelessness, Committee Against Violence, Las Coles Community Services, Special Care Medical Services, Holy Press Hospital Medical Center for Cancer Services, Rock Mountain Youth Corps, Tausful Community Health, Masco Muni Bad, and Inside Out, subject to negotiations of mutual agreeable contract respectfully. Staff, any questions as well as this time in the panel?
Do you have any questions? They're being done. Call for a motion that includes a mutual leave of agreeable contract. Your word is?
I'd like to make motion to allow staff to enter into contractual agreements with the selected group respondents.
Second.
We have a second and a motion to award the RFP two thousand nineteen dash oh four medical and social outreach services to nine entities. Please call.
Commissioner Faber?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard?
I'll understand because of my relationship with the TC and-
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don?
Yes. Item C, under Department Matters, discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of an application and resolution number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-two authorizing the county municipality to submit application to the government finance and administration, local business organization to participate in the juvenile adjudication program. And Mr. Manager, would you be today?
Yes, Manager, Mr. Valdez is out of Yale today. This, this is our annual application for juvenile education program grant funded by the state and the DFA's administration. And I recommend the program.
You have your question?
Motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-two authorizing the county to submit the application to DFA for the juvenile adjudication program.
Second. And a motion in a second, as stated, for item C, please call.
Commissioner Faber?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don?
Yes. Our next I V T, discussion, consideration and decision regarding an amendment to the juvenile adjudication fund grant to adjust the in-kind match budget for administrative personnel services.
Thank you, Manager. I also recommend the approval of this amendment as well.
Please hear a motion.
Also, motion, Mr. Manager, second.
There was been a motion and second on item D, please call.
Commissioner Faber?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don?
Yes. And item D is investment committee report to Taus County Board of Finance this week, your two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, third quarter meeting of Susan, the Chief of County Treasurer.
I have to look at my watch and it's good morning, so good morning, Chair. Members of the Board of Plans. I'd like to say that in our next quarter meeting, we're going to be separating the presentations to the Board of Finance. I've totally got a separate agenda and separate from the commission meeting. And it'll be set by the county manager. And it'll probably be fifteen minutes prior to your nine o'clock meeting. Any questions regarding that? And I think that is protocol. And I will just make it very distinct that you are wearing the hats of the Board of Finance. What I am presenting to you this morning is the report of the investment committee meeting to the Board of Finance for the third order, both of whom are two thousand eighteen through two thousand nineteen. And we met on May first at ten A M. in the assessment conference room. And those in attendance were myself and the almost outstanding Deputy Treasurer, Mary Ann Gonzalez, the Treasurer of the county, and Grant Hutton, the manager, Luca Martinez, the finance director. And Ronald Sanders was unable to attend. And, and Commissioner Hoda was unable to attend. And by the point, the first item that we discussed was the investment work study. So that was done on, on March the twelfth. And that was our presentation and work in capital markets. Came all the way from Salt Lake City to bring to the county. And we're very appreciative of the time that they took to, to make this presentation to us. And those in attendance- And those in attendance were members of the finance staff and it was Amanda Reino, Luca Martinez, Jonathan Montoya, and we had Ronald Sanders from U.S. Bank. And we want to thank Candace Liddon, Deputy Commissioner, who attended, and Randy Walker. And again, I forgot Luca Martinez. So again, we were very, they presented this summary of our investment very simply to where it was very understandable. And they gave us also the projections that then we were going to, of the interest that we're going to receive through the year. And so again, it was very clear to all of us that the items that we have are safe. They explain that and in 250,000 increments that the IRS has covered and the interest that is earned monthly, it is sent to the county and we put it in the general fund, even though it affects a lot of the different funds, a lot of the different, all those departments, it's all put in there. And then except for the other specific funds, line 411 and the adjournment fund, those are subject, which I'll explain later as I give my investment report. But again, I went ahead and I presented the third quarter treasures report. And again, I believe that we are having issues because the items that I put are very small. And what I'd like to do in the future is just inform you that we have the investment committee meeting and I'm always giving you a detailed quarterly report. I know through the finance department gives you a quarterly report on the GRP and it's kind of like a big picture for what I'm giving you and that you can always use. And I have hard copies in case you want to take home is the detail so you can look and see what each quarter does. And it is equal of 7.31 to 5%. And so any changes, they're there. And so that's very easily understood and that you've looked at in the past. And the other one is the detail of the taxes received for the second, the third quarter. And again, we're at 73.4% that we've received. We have 7% more to bring in. And the property tax prior year, we're again, we're on target at 75%. The interest and penalty, we have received 75%. So hopefully all of that will come in and we'll make it to target. And the next unusual point that I present to you all is my analysis. And like I said, this is, actually, this is kind of like a small picture, a one-page picture of everything that occurs in the big old letters that the treasure service uses track and file every month. And but this is a third quarter report. So what I do is I like to look at and I prepare an analysis which gives you the, well, is the cash analysis for the third quarter and that is the cash flow analysis, which brings in, which tells you that in revenue, she brought in $10,668,769.7. The expenditures are $8,252,979. And in transfers in and out, you have, I have two totals. One is a total, that's why it's in the report, but I like to break it up so you can see how, what amounts are budgeted and what amounts have been transferred out to each department. So that total is $153,515.51. And so at the end of the third quarter, your, the balance is 462,774, so we're in the black as in that month. I also give you the general fund cash balance, which is $6,796,545.1. And I'm giving you the cash balances of what I call the doughnut funds, which is the road fund and they have a balance of $43,428.42 after they retain a 112 reserve. And the Fund 207, which is the emergency 911, they have a cash balance of $982,757. The senior program, the Fund 219, $63,986.65. The detention center fund, 226, $138,159.85. The grand match fund, $21,381. The capital enhancement fund, Fund 399, they have $1,447,588.64. The EMS fund, $218,836.13 for a total of $2.9 million. And so if you add the 2 to 6.7 and the 2.9, and that's pretty liquid if you want to take that picture and see the liquidity that is in Tusk County. And the next picture that I usually provide for you again is the graph that kind of tells you the highs and lows of how money comes into the county cash balance at the end of each month. And the following page gives you the numbers to make up that graph. And again, you see the, in March, at the end of March, you see the $6,996,000 entered in fiscal year 18 and 19. And the difference from the two, from the two years is a minus $174,734. And we have a reserve of $2,992,745. The remaining balance is $3,803,300,000 that we have invested, $3,250,000. The excess from the cash balance that we invest is $257,264.52. So if we keep like one additional 112 reserve, which is being recommended by DFA, we have an additional $997,581. So you have an excess of $2.8 million, $272.27. And the next report is the investment report for the third quarter. And again, on the general fund, the $3,250,000, we've, year-to-date interest is $52,856.16. And then in Fund, maybe USD 411, we have made $15,141.96. And in Fund, in the adjournment fund, $18,952.73. And then we have the cash that we're using in a lending fund. And that is what's generating the wallet limit, which is $175,406.42. And you factor out the analysis fee that the bank charges for, his bank charges, but if you look at the very bottom end of the list, it says the year-to-date interest earned to general fund is $250,284.27. And the year-to-date total interest earned in total with all the funds is $286,278,000. So again, we're doing well. We're, I know probably for sure that we're going to exceed the, in the general fund, over $300,000 in interest this next year at the end of July, June 30. Any questions on that? But I'd like to add a little something to my investment committee, and that's a report from the treasures office. And I'd like to say that on May 2nd, 2019, at Placso, we celebrated the National Day of Prayer. And I was so glad to see that Commissioner Donald attended and represented the county. There was a proclamation that was read that the President, Donald Trump, gave for that particular day and one from the governor and Mayor Roman also, who resented the proclamation. And so there was no proclamation, but Commissioner Donald's voice, some beautiful words that encouraged, encouraged the theme of the day. And the theme was pray for America, love one another, love one another just as I have loved you back and found it in John 1534. And the prayers were the centers of influence. One was government and my assignment, I was assigned a portion of it and that Gil Martinez prayed over government and my assignment was to pray over the staff of the government, all the government offices, and it was my honor to do that. We prayed for the military, the media, the arts, the businesses, the education, the church, and the family. And four years, it must have been three or four years ago, I attended, I think just last, last year I did not attend, I was out of town. But I think it was, yeah, three years ago, there were only, I think, four or five of us in attendance. And it was a very, very cold and wet day, that particular day, but to see the group, the crowd that was there that day and just in honor of this day. And I'm sure that there were many, many people in all of the United States standing in united prayer for these seven centers of influence. Well, thank you very much for your time and if there are not any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Next item, Budget Matters, discussion on possibly increasing the mill rate for residential values during the month.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. During the meeting held on April 20th, direction by the board is even should provide a fiscal impact to the county, but more importantly, the cost would be to our taxpayers if we increase the mill rate on the residential side. For purposes of today's meeting, I will review your statutory limitations and provide useful information regarding the limits. It is my hope that the presentation, that a consensus will be made regarding operating elevate and use for the residential tax base of Tusk County. This presentation is referencing DFA, so the New Mexico Department of Finance Administration oversees all local public bodies that would include counties, municipalities, and special districts. For purposes of today's presentation, I have referenced the property tax presentation that the Revenue Stabilization Tax Policy Committee did in September 15, 2016. Some key terms I'll offer, assessed value. This is evaluation for property tax purposes and is the county assessment's estimate of a property value, taxable value. This is the assessed value multiplied by the tax ratio of one-third as established by statute. The net taxable value is the taxable value minus any exemptions that a property over median title to. And the mill levy or the tax rate is defined as the tax rate applied for every $1,000 of net taxable value of both residential and non-residential property allocated to a government entity. The maximum authorized, state statute authorizes various local governmental entities to impose mill rates up to the maximum amount and withhold for that shortening. Increments, the mill levy or tax rate increment, the governing body may impose a new or add, subtract increments to the existing mill rate after it determines that additional or reduction or revenue is needed for the general operating purposes of the county. New Mexico law, under the Constitution, Article 8, Section 1 indicates tax charge in proportion to the value, except that annual increases in value of residential properties may be limited by the co-owner age, supposedly on 65 and 60 years of their service. Article 8, Section 2 references the tax rates for the operating purposes are limited to $20 per every $1,000 of the taxable value without voter approval. Section 7 of the New Mexico statute defines the $20 maximum mill rate as follows. The counties can impose up to 11.85. The municipalities can impose a maximum rate of $7.65 service per that $1,000. And school districts can also impose a maximum rate of 50 cents. The New Mexico Property Tax Code referenced in Section 7-35 all the way to Section 7-38, the code is administered by the Department of Taxation and Revenue Department. It's also part and administered by the Department of Finance Administration. Section 7-36 provides for the valuation methods for property taxation. Responsibility of the county assessors to maintain the current and correct values, she gave for the presentation earlier. Residential properties are limited to the annual valuation increase of 5% and the statute references right here. During this process, the assessment's office rules to add new properties and property improvements and then to compare to the sale prices. Section 7-37 applies and governs the imposition of the property taxes and the tax rates authorized. Some key players in this decision-making process at the local level, we have our county assessor to maintain the current and correct values. She reports those to taxation, property and tax department and also to DFA. She's also responsible to prepare the property tax schedule. Our county treasurer at the local level is responsible to mail, collect, and distribute those taxes. The governing bodies, the local taxing entities are supposed to impose the property tax rates as allowed by law. The major governmental units include counties, municipalities, and school districts. Other major governmental units are also soil and water sanitation districts. At the state level, the tax and rent division, specifically the property tax division, they determine and certify the property valuations. DFA, specifically the local government division, they prepare the tax certifications by September 1st and the state board of finance calculates the state geophones, the debt mill rates. The New Mexico Soil and Water Conservation Commission coordinates with our local soil and water conservation districts to provide those mill rates to DFA. There's three different types of taxes. The operating mill tax generates the recurring revenue which pays for the salary benefits, contract services, equipment, supplies, assurances, yields, basically the day-to-day operations of running the government. Special mill levies generate revenue for school district projects or for operating and maintaining county hospitals and for operating in such high-end districts such as the lighting sanitation districts. The debt mill levies pay the principal and interest on the debt, which is incurred generally for acquiring and constructing capital facilities in the county. The yield control formula that was discussed briefly by our county assessor, basically that's the statute's intent, is to prevent extraordinary increases in response to property assessments. So as she goes out and assesses new value, we have to almost keep in mind that yield control plays a huge factor. As the values increase or decrease, the rates adjust to limit the tax increase or decrease to approximately the rate of inflation and the growth attributed to the new construction. These rates are calculated using the residential and non-residential properties on aggregate taxes. totals, which means they don't affect valuations on a personal or individual's properties. So not at any one time, just because I'm with the Martinez, she's going to go and tax me more, she has to tax accordingly to the aggregate total of the valuations in our county. This does not, this applies to operating rates imposed in Section 7-37 that I have referenced up here, I'll go over in a minute. It doesn't apply to any geophone debt, and newly imposed operating or special levies are not subject to the control of first year disposition. The timeline for the DFA property tax line, so June 1st, we have to submit our budget to DFA. June 1st is when they actually approve and submit the budget with the tax revenue estimates or the projected rates. By August 1st, DFA receives from property and tax division their certified values, including the state's test data, and calculates those mill rates accordingly. By September 1st, DFA certifies all those property tax rates and submits to the county commissioners for adoption, so we'll be getting those rates in September. By October 15th, DFA distributes the property tax distribution table by the certificates accordingly to our county treasurer. By November 1st, the county treasurer prepares and sends out the property tax bills. By December 1st, the first half is due. January 1st, the treasurer distributes the property tax monies to the taxing entities. And then April 1st, the second half is then due. For purposes of today's discussion, we're going to be discussing the tax rate for the residential value, which I have a little red arrow, which is at 5.962, right above that, that's our state debt that would be calculated for the geophone, that's at 1.36 mils. This information is provided on the link that I have referenced below, so if anyone looked it up and wanted to walk into. This also is provided on the DFA's website. This is the residential rate in Taos and the non-residential values in Taos. The residential values are the 925 million, the non-residential values are the 567 million. Together on the right, I have column B, that's the $1.4 billion of assessed values here in Taos County. This information is also available on the website that I have linked below. For purposes of the next item, the item, the 925 million and the 567 million dollars that I have start, that I haven't read, get plugged into this worksheet, which is basically called the Property Tax Budget Supporting Schedule. This is the supporting schedule required by DFA to submit with our annual budget. As you can see, column B is where I plugged in those two numbers, the 925 and the 567 million respectively. For purposes of the illustration and the numbers that were referenced below, the operating rate identified in item C is at 5969, and right below is the non-residential rate, which is the max, the 11.85%. Column D represents the map between B times C. The collection rate is determined in column E, right now we're using the collection rate of the 91.5. When you add up the non-residential and residential rates for both of those factors, you get the yield total of the 11.211 million dollars. This would be how much we were planning to work on our budget for the 2020 cycle with the collection of 21, 91.5%, excuse me. So during that meeting, April 26th, we talked about whether or not she increased the buy of no one half a mil. For purposes of today's meeting, we decided that a comfortable rate for the commission to consider would be a half mil. So using the same numbers only for the residential top, because that's the top case we would impact because the bottom level or the non-residential rate is our best, 11.85. So if we increase the operating rate for the residential values, that would generate approximately $423,000 of new revenue. A half mil increase, I have a notation on the bottom, would support the requests needed to add the following, three full-time sheriff deputies, one full-time MIS technician, and one planning technician. During our retreat and during the several budget meetings that we've had with our staff, these are our needs, they're not wants anymore, they need these to operate effectively and efficiently for the county, we're providing more services, we've grown. What this does for taxpayer A, what I do is I broken down the impact. So a taxpayer A who has an assessed value of $200,000, that taxable value is divided by three, we discussed this earlier, which would give him a taxable value of $66,677. If this taxpayer has any exemptions, like the head of that exemption or the vengeance exemption, you would subtract those out. So for purposes of taxpayer A, if this person had both exemptions, you would subtract the $6,000. The net taxable value would then be $60,667 times that mill rate of half a mil. This taxpayer A would see an increase of $30.33. The presentation that our treasurer, that our assessor office did right before this, basically identified that she has 13 to 14 million dollars of mill property that she can be adding to the values. So this might not even materialize, so as we talked about earlier, as you add more value to your tax base, everyone else gets that fair share, so it's spread out, it's not an individual increase, it's an aggregate total, so it's divided by everyone else. So this might not even be an increase, it might be everyone else is just paying their fair share of their tax bill.
In other words, that's a maximum?
Right. Taxpayer B is the same property assessed value at 200,000, again giving the taxable value, divide that by three. This person has no exemptions, so their net taxable value remains the same. This person would then be paying $33.33 in their property tax bill. Keep in mind that it's split in two, so you pay your first half, then you pay your second half. Taxpayer C is someone like me, this is my assessed values, a third of that is 135,308. I don't have any exemptions, so I'm paying the full amount of the taxable values. For me to increase those positions and to add more services to our community, it would cost me $67.65, that's me on an individual base. At your discretion, if we change that 5969 mill rate to what's referenced on item C, right go to the 6469, this would generate 11.6, which is that increase of $432,000 discussed earlier. This would allow me to finish up the interim budget, and it would also add those five new positions to our county budget. Is that free questions?
Okay, thank you, Chair. So if I could get like eight folks, then we're going to do more of something in that range from that, but is that because a fair amount of our gross receipts tax are already spoken for because of this conference?
Correct.
And so most counties actually get, don't have quite that big of a discrepancy, right?
And so GRTs accounts for like 9% of our budget?
Right. We, you know, we mortgaged off a big chunk of our GRT in order to build those contracts. It's a good move, I'm just saying that we rely upon gross receipts tax for that. So the difference between increasing the mill in a situation like this and a special election is that in a situation like this, the individual taxpayer, as you said, can be helped out by the construction. So, and I think if you check the planning department, we are running ahead on our building permits, and so it's possible that the $16 per 100,000 would not even materialize. If this board decided to increase the amount by half a percent, as you suggested, would it, would the resolution include specific earmarking, like we're going to use this for deputies or?
No, but I would, so we prepared the budget for the budget meeting that we had on April 26th, that was the initial that I wasn't able to complete, considering that we have to take into account how still viable would be to increase that power of water consumption, and then our medical rates for, so this half mil would be added to that pie, it would just be distributed as far as the operating budget for our county on general fund.
And we would have to do a resolution?
No, we don't need to do a resolution, so that's the reason why I went over the statutory limitations. So for the residential rate, you can go up to the 11.85, and you can also go to the 11.85 on the non-residential side. Right now, well, we go down the residential side. It's only if we exceed that 11.85 that it would require voter approval or action, not a resolution by our commission after the fact.
So you and Branches can decide to do it on your own?
No, so what happens is once our assessor steps new values, so one thing that you have to keep in mind is, let me go back to the slide real quick just so you can kind of see this. So we're preparing a 2020 budget on 2018 numbers. So the 2019 numbers will be set up by our assessors and some our fight in for June, so those should then be certified by the state level, and then those numbers will then change for the next budget, which will then be reflected on the 2021 budget.
And you're going to want this board to vote on the question of whether or not to keep it at 5.9 something, something, or go to 6.4?
And then depending on yield control, it's going to change, they, the first of my, I forgot to mention, but DFA, they're the ones that determine the rate, they send what we then operate about to operate our county.
Well, we submit to them, it's the number, the budget number, and then they figure out the rate. So all we would do would be increase our budget number by enough to hire some more deputies, et cetera.
Right, right.
And that we approve when we approve the budget?
Yes.
Okay, and you want from us today, our suggestion?
A consensus on whether or not you would allow for us to increase above that half mil, so we would change it to the rate of the 6469. Keep in mind that the highest you would be able to go would be like 11.85. And for purposes of other documentation, I could provide you a courtesy copy of all the counties of the state and whether rates are for residential and non-residential, just to consider Taos County's stance compared to the other counties in the state of Mexico.
You mentioned the 14 million in new properties. Will that also increase the budget or?
No, so keep in mind that we're submitting this budget on the 2018 numbers. Once our assessor sends those values to PTV, they spot to determine them to be correct, and then base their finals. Those numbers won't happen until after this budget's approved, so I won't use those numbers until the next budget cycle.
But for the current budget cycle, you're saying if you give the half set, that would be included in this year's budget?
Yes.
So in other words, the number that we submit to DFA, that's as much as we can collect. We can't collect any more than that?
We can collect.
No, but I mean, if you, if you collect more, then it doesn't result in increase in individual taxes.
Right. So that's where the assessor's office will now add that 14 million dollars to our tax base, and that, like I said, won't even, so when we look at the half mil increase, it may not even increase the tax bill, it might even decrease because we're adding more value to our tax base.
Thank you.
So just to get clear, so you're giving us the consensus to go up half a mil, and with that, we're going to fund three positions for the sheriff's office, one for the planning office, and one for MIS? How many hobo's assessor's? She's getting those positions for the reevaluation?
Okay. Well, I'm assuming that that's your recommendation, you know, that's, that's recommendation that, you know, you, you, you chose the position, so you feel like, me, I agree with you, certainly in favor of giving the sheriff some more help.
The only way you, the only way we can give the sheriff more help rather than raising the mill rate is to come from every department throughout the county, is the only way we can fund new positions.
Thank you very much. I'm in, Chair.
Thank you.
Now we move on to item, the team's cabinet managers, reports of matters. I'm a, is update to county commission on various items affecting Taos County.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, our auditors will be here on July 25th. They've already sent us the workbooks for finance and treasury's office to start filling out, so we look forward to that with the boardroom group. We're going to need you to turn in your iPads, and we're going to install something called Peak Agenda, that's what we're going to start using the board for. And so if you could leave those with us for after the meeting, and we'll get those installed, and we're going to run to Peak, the next meeting. Our current provider did get bought out, and that's one of the reasons for the changes today with you. We don't need it exactly today, so. So we could schedule a time with the Commissioner, perhaps, to get, install the new app. Another thing that I want to make sure I have consensus on to move forward with is, a couple of years ago, you may remember, Taos Independent School District was trying to give us a Royal Mondo School, so that was enclosed for over 20-plus years. That has not moved forward in the last two years, and they want to continue to transfer that over to us, so if there's any objections, please let me know, and I'll move forward with that as well. And, and objections? Is there an objection? I've been trying to get ahold of our engineer, Data Engineering Incorporated, but we haven't been able to get ahold of, they're working on coming up, the Matthew project for us, as well as LaGuardia Road, so if you see Mr. Baker, please tell him to contact there or want. We want to move forward with those projects. There's other projects as well, but those ones where we should want it to be out by this time as well.
I hope you see him tomorrow, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Barrow. We're also still returning in our response to opioid litigation, Matt can speak to this better than I can. So the county head to complete a fact sheet is one of the plaintiffs, and we turned that in, just got information from the sheriff's office, from EMS, and opioid-related deaths.
Commissioners, on that note, on the opioid issue, this is the first step in this consolidated mitigation that's being taken in each case, is beginning to gather the information from the town on all, any information they have on their opioid issues within the county, and that will be ongoing for some time.
Moving on to item B. We've been approached by members of Serna, a certain land rent, to be their fiscal agent for their capital appropriations of $50,000. They don't have the funds to purchase the land, so they would like us to take that on. And I said I'd bring it up at the commission meeting, see if there's any objections to it, and also LaGuardia County would like us to be their fiscal agent as well. And I've spoken with the commissioner, he's listed on my email that just passed out. We did discuss, you know, a bit with the commissioner, with the charge of 3% administrative fee, and I said I'd also bring that up here at the meeting, just to make sure all of you are okay with it before we do it. They're our neighbors, so we figured that'd be something that we'd be able to help with, along with the percent, the certain land rent as well. And so there's no objections from the commission, we'd like to move forward with that.
Chair, is the line brand official, do they have a natural award that is certified by IRS, or is it just kind of a finding?
I have not checked into the certification. I was told, the measurements always that they were recognized by the state. I was told, uh, measurements always that they were recognized by the state of New Mexico. So if you want to move to contact Mrs. Beverly, I hope if it was okay with the board to move forward. So I work with Beverly, so we'd probably make that part of the process, their documentation that they are a unit of government. And then for item D, we'd like to be scheduled to special meetings in the month of May to go over the budget. Uh, so we'd like to pull up your calendars. And we've met, uh, there's just a handful of departments that we're left to meet with. I think there's about three. I don't know if you're available on the, enter your bill on the 17th.
I'm good with the 17th, ma'am, Chair.
16th.
We're not here on the 16th or 17th, so, but Tammy can do it.
So the 17th will work for two commissioners, what about the 16th? Uh, that's the IGC, sort of landfill and college things in the afternoon.
This 16th works with, what else?
What time are you?
I need to leave about 3:00.
How long will the meeting take?
About two hours.
Is it morning?
Morning.
I, I can't, we have the IGC coming, the college base, so I can't.
This is on the 16th?
So the other thing that we could do is do it on the 21st after our regular meeting. And then we'll need another one following week to approve it so we can submit it to DFA.
What about the 20th?
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 20th.
Okay, what's that?
20th, Monday? 20th, 20th?
My, this is just checking, make sure we're all, I think we're up to here. So 20th at 9:00 AM, we'll have a budget workshop meeting. And then we'll meet on the week of the 27th for budget approval.
So that's a short one?
That's the short one.
What about the 20th meeting? We're off on the 27th, right?
Right.
28th, what's the?
28th at night?
All right.
Thank you. We'll update the calendar and I'll send that out as well.
Mr. Manager, we do want to discuss item C, the residential treatment center.
Apologies for skipping that over. Um, Ms. Martinez, myself did meet with Mary Gray and Simon Torres last week. And they wanted to know if the county still has interest in pursuing the residential treatment center. Uh, they would, if the county's still committed to doing the work with us either way, they consider us a partner. And we explained to, which they were all aware of, manager portal again, formal. But they would have to go out for a request for proposal again because of the length of time that it's been since 2017. And, uh, so we just wanted to know if there's consensus with the board to still use the former JBC as the treatment center. And there's other competing needs for it to maybe expand current detention center for women. And then there's also was talked, uh, using it as a detox center as well. The residential treatment center, they located defined building. But I don't know, we said we'd break it up with the board to make sure there's still consensus to move forward with using old JBC as RTC.
Mr. Manager, do you believe that we need additional space for our special management unit or expand, you know, women, put women on another side? My concern is if we, it becomes a residential treatment center, that we may be in violation of requirements for SMU special management.
Right.
So I, I have reservations only because of that. I don't want a short meeting that we have in the jail for expansion, future expansion. So I, I have reservations about doing that. I'm sorry.
And, and I do too as well. Because we do need additional space for detention center. Uh, we do need a special management unit. We're currently using plus C and D for that, and that's not adequate. Now, 1:00, 2:00 going to be on the webinar. That's discussing restricted housing and special management. Uh, so, uh, regarding the hospital that passed this session. So we already need additional space to expand the jail. We can expand the women until we increase our staffing. So it wouldn't be nothing, either, we don't want to be nothing that we do right away. But, uh, and I was, I did tell Matt to teach Mr. Torres and Ms. Gray that we have this competing lead, but we asked the board to see if we still wanted to use this RTC.
So Mr. Chair, I have this idea that we build kind of a one-stop shop using, requesting from the legislature, capital, a lot of money, some land where we would include a residential treatment center, space for detox. We could even put a homeless shelter, but also where behavioral health would be able to hand off to other agencies. Kind of a one-stop behavioral, behavioral health facility. I know it's a big vision, it would take a lot of time, but right now there is money in the state for funding such an ambitious endeavor. But I see that as a, another way to get a residential treatment center here. So it's, it's just a thought for next year's capital allocation. You know, we just don't have the necessary spaces for detox, even for homeless. Even, we know we have an RTC facilities, but what if we were to build it? I don't know if we could float industrial revenue bonds. I don't know if it has to be taken into economic development, but I think it's something that we need to think about.
Yes.
What was your recommendation for the use of the juvenile detention center, Mr. Robert Miel?
My recommendation would be to eventually use it for, uh, another women's pod. And, uh, that would be my recommendation.
I guess, but then the question is how long is eventual? And should we, um, get some residential treatment going there in the interim?
That could be a possibility. It'd be quicker to probably do the residential treatment center than it would be to expand for women's pod.
And so we could do it on a short-term basis and see how it goes. And then with your longer-term missions, or do you think it's not worth even taking that step?
Well, just got to keep in mind the cost of transitioning the existing JBC, which is, for example, changing our doors. So we have the typical jail iron doors with the food boards. So, uh, we would have to convert that. So if we were, if this board was amenable to that expense of transitioning it to the RTC and then with the expense of bringing it back to our detention facility.
Well, it would depend, it would depend on the cost and the amount of time that you think you would have. Uh, you know, there's some speculation there, obviously, but when you say eventual, what is the timeframe that you have in mind?
I clearly don't have a timeframe in mind as far as moving there. We've got to increase our detention salaries. We need to hire more individuals.
It could be some time.
It could be some time. And, um, detention staff is saying that we're going to need more than the nine vacancies that we currently have.
In order to use it?
It's for the women, so.
If it never happened, if it never happened, and I need to leave it unused, if that's the case?
Our biggest issue is like, uh, I have a chair to find is the special management that we're not currently satisfied. So we've got to figure out where to address those.
But special management, you wouldn't take up the whole use of our detention?
No, no, we're not.
It should be.
The, the special management, you have to then go to either use C and D pods or use the two women pods, E and F. So the, all the males with special management would stay within that area. It'd just be the women when we.
Is it possible to accommodate both? Special management and the residential treatment?
It, it's possible that we would have to manage the population. And we have different, so our high risk, our, our detainees that give us more issues sometimes, we could put them into C and D, uh, because it's a smaller unit that we can control better than a pod A, for example, which is our largest pod. So it's, to answer your question, we, to use C and D, special management, we would have to, uh, maybe lower the population within a pod to put those higher-risk detainees in. Am I saying that correctly, Paul?
So, um, what the idea was, again, like you were mentioning, was if our women's population was moved over to the juvenile wing, it would be retrofitted, the echo adult would be retrofitted to manage our higher-risk or assaulted, um, some stuff like that. So basically you put like crash bars on your showers and basically make that, you know, where this house, obviously you have to go over that webinar today, but managing them where I believe it was four hours a day that they're, they'll be given out. So each, you know, cell by cell, and that removes all of those high risk from your general population so that increases, or you can utilize our Bravo, which only holds right now, we have B. But that's the reason being is one of our higher-risk detainees is actually housed in there. So the more we put in there, it's, it either turns into assaults or whatever other reasons or precipitizes that. So if we remove maybe one or two people from, say, Bravo, we can turn that into the actual max capacity, which is supposed to be, I believe, 32 in there.
It's your preference not to have the residential treatment in there, I'm guessing?
You know, I, I understand the need for it, and I, I believe juvenile or RTC would be really beneficial in community. But I think it's attachment to the adult detention center just isn't the best location or use of it. I think it would be best utilized outside of our facility.
And is, is free of you all agree on that?
Um, I, like I said, I, I believe it would be, and, and my best interest that the RTC would be outside the facility. And I don't know if Brent stands on that.
No, I, I need three guys to work together, two guys.
Oh, I agree. Um, you know, I believe, I mean, I would like to have a stated own opinion on that because I know Andrew came from the juvenile.
That's why I asked you.
But I, I, I believe he might be on the same side of it as he would love to have an RTC. But I don't know if he would agree actually of being in our, in our facility. But, um, I believe an RTC would be great in our community, just not attached to our facility. I think we would get more utilization out of it if we would turn that into our women's wing. I mean, it has potential for a lot of stuff. I mean, there's a bigger classroom, we could turn programs over there, we could turn law library over there. I mean, we could do a lot more with it, but, you know, on our side of it, we do have a lot of space to utilize our population to the best that we're, you know, as NMC says, we're.
And we could do, uh, Catholic services.
I mean, uh, we can try and reach out as much as we can. I mean, I know there's only a volunteer group and I don't know what their faith face is, but we don't, I don't believe there's any more in other than just that one itself. I mean, I think maybe a rabbi comes in once in a while, but it's nothing more than that.
So, uh, any given day, what's the average people in SMU?
So recently, I mean, obviously with short staffing and all that stuff, that these guys are trying to take advantage of the staff. We've seen anywhere from about 15 recently to about five. And it kind of bases on what they're, basically what kind of violations they're doing.
Right, yeah. We're pretty much keeping them in booking, is that correct?
Um, no. So if we have a detainee in our outfit unit that actually say popped his food bar or he was messing with the electrical outlets or whatever he was doing, we actually lock them down in the same unit. We don't even move, remove them from the population. So they're staying in there, they're just managing their time outside of that because it's two hours right now. We just, they ask for that hour, they come out, they utilize that hour in their day room and people have a red. But we're actually not removing them if they say they're assaulted or short-staffed or detained. We might already have the space to move them anywhere because our charter units are being utilized by our other population, which isn't suitable for our general population.
So today booking, how many people are in SMU?
There's nobody in SMU booking. The only time to use that is if there's like damage to property or even, I mean, there's a gentleman that assaulted pretty much a person in every single unit. So we have no choice but to move them to booking. But that's been bottom line issue that we haven't actually utilized it as a, unless they came in with drugs and we found them, they, they expand on contract control, but we don't consider it special management until they're actually in housing populations.
If, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to hear Sheriff's opinion. Chair, can you give us your opinion?
Hi, it's, um, you guys have talked about a number of things. I've been following on which part of your work.
Do you think we should put an RTC in the juvenile or whether we need it for?
Yeah, I'll speak very boldly towards that. We, an RTC certainly has its place in the community and we need, we do not need it in the jail. That is not appropriate setting for it, it's costly. In my opinion, exactly as your director just said, while we've talked about, because that needs to become F pod for females on the two-tier side. The single-tier side, we need reserve that for training, to train future COs for cell extractions, for deputies to work with them, for other non-forced to work with, for EMS to do drills, overdoses and things that we face in very regular interim. I got real excited when I heard Grant mention something about his school up in Aramundo. If that building was better, you know, the school building would be a good location or something like that. I've just recently learned that the senior center is, is kind of delayed on the move in. Um, it sounds like the forces have already gone forward for the UNM to take that old senior building. But that would have been a reasonable something for an RTC. Um, I like to, Commissioner Blakemore, spa process of, you know, let's get something going, let's try it, see what kind of measurable results we have from it. I think your spa. on. I'll just say a call due respect, that is the place to do it.
And during the lineup within support, you're thinking down the lineup, there's successes and then you go through the funding for the whole blast, you're going to have those successes to save, but until we open, we're not going to have the data and the successes to bring on the big grand vision that you had with the one-stop shop. We got to get it up in somewhere.
Yeah. Did I ask you?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then there's pressure from CYFT, Children, Youth and Family Department to open the RTC, so I'm having it from both sides as well, so there's going to be probably no winners on this one because, like I said, the department of CYFT is asking why we're going to open this up. I'm getting, I have an email I need to respond to from yesterday, so...
I think we should link it up to our manager based on you taking a webinar today, your best decision here regarding CYFT, I think you need to ask them, we need some help finding a better location with more beds than 18.
And they can sign off on this location.
I know, but I just, for our long-term vision and long-term planning, I, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot to give it, to put an RTC there. That's just my opinion. I don't think it's going to work and I think we need to move forward in opening up that side to the women. Maybe an analysis of how many employees we need to do that, open it up on the women's side, and let's start planning for that. All right, thank you. Moving on to Commissioners' reports of matters, any new business for future commissions? There being none, any Commissioners' announcements? There being none, we're moving on to executive session, discussion regarding vertical books based these matters, who may also be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act of Session 10-15-1, H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened communications. Your attorneys have a recommendation you're open to executive session?
Motion to the Attorney. Motion to the Attorney to the Executive Session of the Session, Attorney's Day. All set.
Mr. Fambro?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Come back into regular session, second.
Motion in second to come back into regular session, please follow. Commissioner Fambro?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blakenham?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Motion to the Attorney. One second.
For executive session and our county attorney is going to give his report regarding item 17.
And I'll talk fast. The matter noticed on the agenda was discussed and no action was taken.
I would accept that report, second.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Don?
Yes.
Motion to the Attorney, second.
Aye aye.
Aye aye.
That was it?
That was it.
You missed a lot of it.
I missed it.